This planning commission is now called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Flengus.
Here.
Vice Chair Moody.
Here.
Commissioner Goins.
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Schlotman.
Present.
And Commissioner Bonar.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I call to your attention the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct, and we appreciate your adhering to these rules so that we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Going on to item number four on the agenda, public comment. All comments made under this item for specific action will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Saying none, we'll move on to item number five, the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the planning commission meeting held on November 12, 2013?
Mr. Chair, my motion is to approve the final minutes for the planning commission meeting of November 12, 2013.
Thank you, Commissioner. The motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of November 12, 2013 carries. Moving on to item six, let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any members, or excuse me, are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action? Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the following items have been requested to be held in abeyance to the January 14, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 10, SUP 51181. Items number 38 through 40, SUP 51444, SUP 51445, and SDR 51443. The following items have been requested to be held in abeyance to the February 11, 2014 Planning Commission meeting, items 32 through 34, VAR 50841, VAR 50842, and SDR 50840. Following items have been requested to be withdrawn without prejudice. Item number 11, SUP 51183, and item number 36, VAR 51385. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to speak on any of these items? Sir, if you could state your name and address, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. My name is Tony Celeste, address 8345 West Sunset Road. I would like to hold items 27, 28, 29, 30, and 31 for 30 days, please.
Excuse me, that's 27, 28, 29, and 31?
27 through 31.
Okay. And that would be obeyed to the January meeting?
Correct, 30 days from...
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Does anybody else wish to be heard on any of these items, or want something else to be polled? Saying none, Commissioner Moody, I'll entertain a motion on these housekeeping items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The motion is to obey items 10, 38, 39, 40, 27, 28, 29, 30, and 31 until the January 14, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Items 32, 33, and 34 to be obeyed until the February 11, 2014 Planning Commission meetings, and to withdraw without prejudice item 11, and to withdraw item 36.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion carries. We're going to move on to the consent portion of the agenda. Consent items are considered routine by the planning commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commissioner, member, or applicant so desires. The items that are on the consent agenda are items 7, 8, and 9. Does any commissioner or any applicant wish to be heard on any of those three items?
Yes, excuse me, Chairman, I'd like to be...I'm going to pull item number 12, abeyance, SUP 51184, special use permit.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We're on the consent item right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll catch that on the one motion, one vote.
Okay.
Does any other commissioners wish to be heard on any of the consent items, items 7, 8, or 9? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Moody?
Motion is to approve items 7, 8, and 9 on the consent portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. The motion to approve consent items 7, 8, and 9 carries. We're now going to go to the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the planning commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Before I start reading them all in, Commissioner Quinn, you're going to pull item 12?
Yes, I'll be pulling item number 12.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll start then with item number 13, which is SDR 50484. The applicant is Alation Homes LLC. The owner is Pilot Rome Property LLC. For possible action on a request for a major amendment of an approved site plan, excuse me, site development plan review for a 52-lot, single-family detached residential development, where a 52-lot, single-family detached development was approved at the northwest corner of Dorrell Lane and Campbell Road. This is in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 14 is VAC 51634. The applicant is Elise A. Burns, 2006 Trust, and Amel Burns, 2006 Trust. The owner is Capitan Way LLC et al. For possible action on a petition to vacate City of Las Vegas sewer easements in portions of Sangra La Night Court and Angelic Dreams Court, generally located north of El Campo Grande Avenue and west of El Capitan Way. This is, staff is recommending approval. Item number 15, VAC 51769. The applicant owner is Greystone Nevada LLC. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a portion of U.S. government patent easements generally located south of the southeast corner of Farm Road and Shamba Road in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 16 is SUP 51601. The applicant is EMY, or Emmy Gong. Owner is L. Bubs 2002-C4 Retail, 8000 LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,016-square-foot massage establishment at 8,000 West Sahara Avenue, Suite 140. Zone, this is in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 17, SUP 51687. The applicant is Pupasaria L. Zunzal. Owner, Milton Escobar. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 2,095-square-foot beer/wine cooler on-sale establishment within an existing restaurant at 2,081 North Decatur Boulevard in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 18, SUP 51742. The applicant is House of Pizza. The owner is 9430 West Lake Mead Boulevard LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,440-square-foot beer/wine cooler on-sale use in conjunction with a proposed restaurant at 9430 West Lake Mead Boulevard, Suite 9, in Ward 4, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 19, SUP 51787. The applicant is Nevada State High School. The owner is Stephen Traceman Living Trust. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed private school secondary at 850 South Durango Drive, Suite 100. This is in Ward 2, Councilman Beers. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 20 is SUP 51788. The applicant is The Mob Museum. The owner is the City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a liquor establishment tavern with waiver to allow an 80-foot distance separation where at least 1,500-foot separation is required from a similar use at 300 Stewart Avenue in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 21 is SUP 51810. The applicant is Hopnups Brewery LLC. The owner is 1120 Vegas LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 4,084-square-foot tavern limited establishment use and ancillary brew pub with a 500-square-foot outdoor seating area at 1120 South Main Street in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 22 is SDR 51779. The applicant is Nevada Adult Day Healthcare Centers. The owner is Southern Nevada Housing Authority. For possible action on a request for a major amendment to an approved site development plan review for a proposed 3,313-square-foot addition to an existing 4,161-square-foot individual care facility, adult daycare, at 330 North 13th Street in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Does anybody wish to be heard on any of these matters? Sir, if you'll state your name and address, please?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Will somebody please explain number 13?
Are you asking to have number 13 polled, sir?
Yeah, I just wanted to explain. You're asking for a 32-lot addition where 30, or a 52-lot addition where 52-lot has been approved.
Well, then, I'm going to have to poll the items, sir.
All right.
If the Director could explain it, it would maybe be easier to start that way.
All right, can we have the applicant on item number 13?
Actually, Chairman, I can just go ahead and briefly explain. I don't think we need to have the applicant come forward.
Certainly.
Basically, what is being requested is that the project as originally submitted was intended to be an attached development, and what they're requesting to do is to have a detached development. It does not change the number of residential units. It does not change the density, and so that is simply the change that is being requested.
Thank you, Director. Does anybody else wish to be heard on any of these items? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Chairman, on item number 21, SUP 51810, I'll abstain on that matter as I have an ongoing business relationship with the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to be heard on number 12.
We polled number 12.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I just need to make a disclosure on item 21, that I do own and interest in a property within the Arts District. I don't believe it'll be any greater or less affected by this action.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The motion is to approve items 10 and 11, and items 13 through...
10 and 11 are obeyed.
Sorry. Items 13 through 22, subject to Commissioner Schlotman's abstention on item 21.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. The motion to approve the one motion, one vote items 13 through 22 carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Schlotman on item number 21.
Mr. Chairman, please note that items 13, 14, 15, 16, 18, and 19 are final action in the absence of an appeal, and items number 17, 20, 21, and 22 will go forward to the January 22 city council meeting.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, that appeal needs to be done within 10 days.
That is correct.
Thank you. Now move on to the public hearing items. We're going to start with item number 12, which was polled from the one motion, one vote. Item number 12 is SUP 51184. The applicant is 99-Cent Only Store. The owner is 99-Cent at Decatur LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer/wine cooler off-sale establishment within an existing 30,176-square-foot general retail store other than listed at 1,200 South Decatur Boulevard in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed beer/wine cooler off-sale use will be located within an existing general retail store that conforms to all Title 19 minimum distance separation requirements. Therefore, staff finds the proposed use can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with the surrounding land uses and recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from the applicant, please.
Thank you. Matthew Dushov, 400 South Rampart, Suite 400, on behalf of Dollar, on behalf of 99-Cent Store. I'm here, Commissioner Quinn, or if anybody has any questions to ask, we ask, and you go with staff's approval. We've already spoken with Councilwoman Tarkanian. She has noted her approval of this. Most of our 99-Cent stores already now have beer and wine. That's all we're asking for here, is beer and wine, in order to compete with the Fresh and Easy's and the Albertsons and so forth, because we do sell those type of goods with them, and we're only asking for beer and wine. It will not take up a large portion of our store, but I'm glad to ask, answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Dushov. I do have just one question.
Just, yeah, let me move on and get the public comment, and...
I apologize.
No problem. Does any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Sir, state your name and address, please.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Commissioner Quinn, I was here, and I'm going to be hauling like a stuck hog on number 10, because these stores, it's just organized chaos in there. You've got kids running all over the place, and I do not understand how they're going to conduct these things in their, what is it, harmonious in whatever manner, because it's just, they're just not set up that way.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Dushov. First of all, I just want to put on the record that these will not, not be single-sailed bottles of beer. They will be six-packs or cases or whatever.
You are absolutely correct on that. We will make sure that that does not happen. It will not be single-cell, single-sale of a Budweiser bottle or a can.
Right. All right, thank you. And the reason that I'm going to ask that this item go on to city council is, there's a lot of housekeeping items that the store itself needs to improve upon prior to you be granting such a special use permit, and with that, I'm going to ask that this item go on to city council at the earliest convenience of the docket.
We have no problem with that. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. This has nothing to do with your application. It just has to do with things that I've seen and other people have seen that they'd like to, you know, get straightened out prior to giving you this special use permit, which is special.
Absolutely understood.
Thank you very much.
And we have no problem with that. Thank you for the opportunity.
So, so we'll move that on at, Director Flynn, at your convenience to the next city council meeting, please.
Okay, does any other commissioners wish to be heard on this matter? Commissioner Quinn, I'll entertain a motion, but I would ask that you articulate exactly what you're looking for as far as the conditions.
My motion is that, on the record, is that there will be no single-sale bottle of any type of alcohol outside of wine. My, and I ask that this be moved to city council to clean up some housekeeping items on the store itself.
Are you referring to?
Go ahead.
Are you referring to the way the store is currently kept?
Yes.
Commissioner? Okay. Just its tidiness, or it's...
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do have one comment before we vote.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I understand, over the years, we've, we've put liquor sales in drugstores, convenience stores. There's a certain number of stores that have deemed acceptable to this, and those are acceptable in other markets as well. I, to be honest with you, the 99-Cent Store, I've been in there. It isn't a drugstore. It doesn't strike me as a, a kind of environment that needs liquor to survive, and at the current pace we've been approving these, we will have them in PetSmart, we'll have them in Wal, Lowe's. I mean, we need to, as a community, kind of say, where, where's our compass at here? So, I am not going to support your item, not that I have anything with 99-Cent Stores, I just, I just think there has to be a nexus to some of these uses that, that we approve.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Let's go ahead then and vote on Commissioner Quinn's motion.
Thank you. My motion is to move this item to city council as an approval.
And I understand this is a motion to approve with the conditions you set forth a few minutes ago?
Yes.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion fails. Do I have another motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny the applicant, application under item 12.
If I may be...
For the reasons stated.
If I may be heard on that. I understand...
Sorry, I...
I apologize.
We're voting now, so...
Okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, just for the item, or the reasons I stated earlier.
Okay, please vote, and please note that a yes vote is for denial. Commissioner Truesdale? Motion to deny carries, 5 to 2.
Mr. Chairman, this item will go forward with a recommendation of denial to city council at the January 22 city council meeting.
Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director. We're now going to move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda, beginning with related items 23 and 24. Item 23 is TMP 49542, Deer Springs. The applicant is D.R. Horton, Inc. The owner is D.R. Horton, Inc. et al. For possible action on a request for a tentative map for a 211-lot, single-family residential subdivision with a waiver of the Town Center Streetscape Design Standards at the southeast corner of Deer Springs Way and Campbell Road. The, and the, this is in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number 24, for possible action on a request for a waiver to allow a non-standard street design related to a 211-lot, single-family residential subdivision. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the requested tentative map for Deer Springs consists of 194-lot, single-family residential subdivision on 26.4 acres located at the southeast corner of Deer Springs Way and Campbell Road. This map is accompanied by a requested waiver for, by a request for a waiver for standard to allow a non-standard street design to omit the required street-knuckle design where required. Staff recommends approval of this request as a submitted tentative map request is in substantial conformance with the recently approved associated site development plan review. Please note that an updated tentative map is in your backup materials. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. My name is Tony Celeste, address 8345 West Sunset Road, here on behalf of the applicant, D.R. Horton Homes. As you are familiar with this project, we've worked, worked long and hard with your staff to get to the site development, which was recently approved. We're coming back forward, forward with the tentative map that matches that. We appreciate staff's recommendation of approval. We've reviewed all the conditions contained therein and are in agreement with all of them. We respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard on this matter?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. In the 2020 master plan, we're trying to reach an energy efficiency standard. The only way that we're going to get that is for solar units on the roof, and in order to have those solar panels, they have to be, the roof has to be orientated to the south with a 15-degree slope. With these houses scattered, with the orientation of these houses, are we going to see a roof design that will support what we need to fulfill our 2020 master plan? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I agree with Mr. Celeste. We have worked hard on this one. I appreciate the applicant's willingness to lower the density on this, and with that lowering of the density down to 194 lots, I would agree with staff that this does now substantially conform with the approved SDR, so you'll see my support.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else wish to be heard? Saying none, Commissioner Moody, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you. Motion is to approve item 23, TMP 49542.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion to approve item 23 carries.
Thank you. Regarding item 24, motion is also for approval following staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Please post. Motion to approve item 24 carries.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, item number 23 is final action in the absence of an appeal within seven days, and item number 24 is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you, Director. Going on now to related items number 25 and 26. Item 25 is TMP 50852. The applicant is Ryland Homes. The owner is Deer Springs Way Trust et al. For possible action on a request for a tentative map for a 62-lot, single-family residential subdivision on 7.97 acres adjacent to the south side of Deer Springs Way, approximately 1,010 feet east of Walla Pay Way. This is in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Related item number 26 is VAC 50851. For possible action on a petition to vacate U.S. government patent easements generally located south of Deer Springs Way, approximately 1,010 feet east of Walla Pay Way. Staff is recommending approval, and I don't think I mentioned staff was recommending approval on item 25 as well, and staff, if we may have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the requested tentative map for Bishop Falls consists of a proposed 60-lot, single-family residential subdivision on 7.97 acres located adjacent to the south side of Deer Springs Way, approximately 1,000 feet east of Walla Pay Way. This map is accompanied by a petition to vacate existing U.S. government patent easements in conflict with the development of the site. The map, as proposed, conforms to Title 19.06 requirements for RCL's single-family compact lot development, as well as tentative... lot development as well as tentative map requirements. Staff therefore recommends approval of the application with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners again. My name is Tony Celeste, address 8345 West Sunset Road, here on behalf of the applicant, Ryland Homes. We appreciate staff's recommendation of approval. There, there is one condition I would like to discuss briefly. It's condition number 11. As you can see in the, on the, the aerial, the tentative map, Conquistador, which is the street bordering to the east of the project. Condition 11 speaks to that, and really it's, it's my, it's the last sentence within that condition that I just would like clarification from. To the east of us is property that is either owned or leased by the water district, and as you can see, that's a street that potentially may not go anywhere. So, the condition basically says that if there's a private agreement that can be entered in between Ryland and the property owner to our east, that the street would be narrowed down to 47 feet when it's fully constructed versus the 60 foot. Generally, the property owner is required to develop their one-half full street improvements. So, in this case, Conquistador is to be 60 feet, we would develop our 30 feet with some of the over paving. The condition that if we were entered into a private agreement with the adjacent landowner, we could then do a 47-foot wide street instead of the 60. But I would want to make it clear that we would only still be required to do our one-half section of that 47 feet. In other words, it would be 23 and a half feet. The condition currently states if Conquistador, if Conquistador Street is reduced to a 47-foot street, the developer shall construct full street improvements for Conquistador Street concurrent with the development of this site. So, I just want to make it clear that if we, if we do enter into that agreement with the adjacent property owner, we're only required to do our one-half, which would be 23 and a half feet with some of the over paving versus the entire street is, if I read this correctly. As you can see above that, it just says construct your half, your, your half-street improvements on the 60 foot. So, with that, I would just like some clarification, but other than that, we're in complete agreement with staff.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this?
Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. My question remains the same. You guys are just sitting there shooting yourself in the foot on the 2020 master plan.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to remind my fellow commissioners what we have done on this, we had some concerns about the orientation of the development, and it's been flipped now. And my concerns have been alleviated, and I believe with the redesign, it does conform with Title 19, and I don't have any concerns about landlocking it anymore, and so you're going to see my, my support.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard on this? Commissioner Truesdale?
For staff, does this still preserve any of the trails? Are there any trails affecting this parcel that?
There, your Chairman, there's a beltway trail, but that wouldn't be the responsibility of this developer to construct along, along the south portion.
Okay, so we're not, we're not making a change here that would prevent the trail from happening in the future?
That is correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Moody again?
Yeah, just to follow up, I think the applicant did ask for a clarification.
I'm going to have the city attorney here.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman?
This has to do with the interpretation of condition 11.
Right.
And I believe that the applicant is wondering if he does enter to an agreement with the adjacent property owner, and under this condition, they're allowed to reduce it to a 47-foot street.
Right.
That he's only still required to pay for just half of it, not 30 feet of it. Is that correct?
The problem is, I think, how would we compel the other person to pay for their other part of the street?
No, I think what he's saying is, if I'm not mistaken, if you do enter into that agreement, you're not compelled by this to pay for more than a half of it. Is that correct?
Exactly. As the first part of the condition reads, it's, it's a 60-foot right-of-way and where we are required to construct our half-street improvement. If this were to be narrowed down to 47 feet, the way I read the very last sentence.
And you're saying that you'd be only required to do half of that 47-foot street?
Exactly.
But then there'd be a problem. How would we compel the other person to do?
No, I agree. I think the way this should be interpreted is, you know, if you're going to enter in the agreement, that's going to be between you and that party. I don't think we can put that as a condition, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't think we should. Maybe Public Works can clarify a little better, but I don't think.
Sure, yeah, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Yeah, just a little bit of background. Originally, the minimum width for a street, if it's a half-street, is 30 feet. That's to allow two-way traffic on one side of the street as it's only half of a street. If we only get, if it's reduced to a 47-foot street, that's not enough asphalt to allow two-way traffic on both sides. So, so the way the condition is written is if, basically if they can't come to an agreement with, with the water district, then it needs to be a 30-foot street so that we can have two-way traffic on that street for this particular development. The reason we allowed a possibility for a narrower street is because we found out from the water district that Echelon Point will not be going east-west from, from the east. So, the water district is planning on, you know, putting a, some pump station or something there that will not have a road going through it. So, there is a possibility they can work with the water district to get down to 47 feet. If we'd like to modify it, we could modify it so that they provide a minimum pavement to allow two-way traffic, but they, it will, a 47-foot street will require them to get an agreement with the water district for, and will need a minimum width for two-way traffic.
Mr. Chairman, you could probably do that or divide it into two separate conditions. Maybe make an alternate conditions, saying if this happens, then this, and if that happens, then this. So, either way, we're fine, but as written now, it seems to say that if he, if he thinks he's not going to pay for the other half of the street, there's going to be a problem later on.
Yeah, it just seems to me that that 47 foot's just going to be a result of an agreement. And so, to me, it just looks like he's got to construct 30 feet, and if he, unless he gets an agreement and.
We need to make that, we need to clarify that condition to indicate that they're to provide the entire street to provide for the, the two separate directions.
Do you have a recommendation for?
Public Works probably need to write that. We can probably, if you want to.
Make it a standard division?
Do the standard conditions call for a half-street or?
The current condition says construct half-street improvements, including the appropriate over paving and pavement transition on Deer Springs and Conquistador, which is the street in question, adjacent to the site concurrent within the development of the site. And that, we have no objection to.
But I'm presuming normal means two ways, not just one side of the street.
Well, the half-street on Conquistador would be the 30 feet plus some over paving, since Conquistador, Conquistador is 60 foot.
And that's not going to be enough for, for both, for both directions of travel.
Commissioner Bonar?
Yeah, unless, unless I'm mistaken, the, the need for two, what I think are 10-foot travel lanes, maybe more, and the curb and gutter sidewalk, it requires a half-street. And even then, I don't know if there's no overpayment over on the other parcels, parcels property or not, right way of an easement. But I think if we don't have two, two minimum 10-foot travel lanes, we don't move our traffic properly. And let me add it this way. This sounds like a precedent-setting thing that is awkward, but it's case by case, but I think we better stick with our standard 30 foot with whatever over paving is necessary.
Thank you. Commissioner Moody?
My, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
And can we just leave condition 11 as is, or do we need to divide that into?
We could do that with maybe them working together between now, is it going to council?
No.
Oh, okay. We can, do you want to maybe let them work that out and then maybe trail it and bring it back?
No, let's make it.
Or just make it standard conditions?
Commissioner Bonar?
Yeah, if we leave it as a standard condition as it is now, and if they need to change that condition, then we'll see them back again after they've made an agreement.
You can always do a review of condition.
Thank you.
I, I, I agree with that. So, my motion regarding item 25, TMP 50852, is to follow staff's recommendation for approval subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion to approve item 25 carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say one more thing, that if, if their interpretation of that condition is different than Public Works, they probably need to get together and make sure they have a, a like-minded understanding of that condition.
Thank you. Commissioner Moody?
Item 26, VAC 50851. Motion is also for approval following staff's recommendation, subject to all conditions.
Please post. Motion to approve item 26 carries.
Mr. Chairman, item 25 is final action in the absence of an appeal within seven days, and item number 26 is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on now to item 35, MSP 50453. The applicant owner is WM CV Phase 1 LLC et al. For possible action on a major amendment to an approved master sign plan to add 14.68 acres to the site area, to add 1 30-foot tall freestanding sign with four electronic reader boards, to add six 2,968 square foot LED display wall signs on the existing parking garage, and to allow LED on the 11 existing wall signs approved by MSP 40138, where they were approved only for vinyl and laminate materials at 445, 455, 475, and 495 South Grand Central Parkway in, in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to amend the existing sign plan for the World Market Center to add 1 30-foot tall freestanding sign as well as 1 2,968 square foot wall sign to the parking garage, and to add the option of providing LED illumination on all of the approved and proposed large wall signs in the development. The signs are proposed, the signs as proposed are in conformance with the previous master sign plan approvals and Title 19, therefore staff recommends approval with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. John Leeloo from the Green Beretorik Law Firm, address 3773 Howard Hughes Parkway, here on behalf of the applicant, World Market Center. First of all, I would like to thank staff for their recommendation of approval, and I am open to answer any questions that the commission may have. I would like to point out that this is our second time before the commission. We were here 60 days ago, and at that time, we were asked to hold a neighborhood meeting, which we did hold, and it was very lightly attended, but we did hold the meeting, and we're here again seeking approval of the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Nobody showed up in the meeting because nobody lives there, but the question about this was, is the intensity of the, the light? And it came down to the lumina, the luminums or the lumens or whatever the deal is. Are we going to have any garish light out there, or is it going to be something muted like we have on the city hall out here? That's my question. Because I don't think that they should have those high-intensity lights out there to blind people as they go by. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Sir, if you'll state your name and address, please?
Good evening, Chairman. My name is Rod Carter. I'm here on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor. Our address is 7370 Dean Martin. We have all kinds of concerns, but mainly in the event that they run off-premise advertising, abuse the on-premise code, we have grave concerns about that, so we would adamantly oppose off-premise advertising. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Back again, name and address.
Back again, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. Tony Celeste, 8345 West Sunset Road, here on behalf of Lamar Advertising. As you know, the billboard industry's been, was heavily involved in the creation of the super graphic ordinance. A key component of that ordinance was the limitation that the super graphic ordinance be limited to on-premise advertising for a principal business in that building. However, I understand that this application is an amendment to the master sign plan, but my concern, or Lamar's concern, is still the same, that the advertisement be limited to the principal purpose of the business and it be on-premise advertising. So, when we looked at the backup material filed in this, or for this application, when we saw the Rolex advertisement, the Verizon wireless raised some red flags for Lamar on, on this potential application. I did speak with Mr. Leeloo earlier this afternoon, and he indicated it was a, a mix-up on World Markets part, as far as the backup material that got submitted and confirmed that it would be on-premise as, as it is stated in, in the staff report. Additionally, I do note that some of the conditions of approval are basically the same that are now in the graphic, or the super graphic ordinance, and that we would also like basically a condition along those lines that would basically state that it may not include off-premise message and is limited to on-premise messages that identify, announce, or advertise the specific principal business operation or attractions that are housed on the premise of the building to which the signage is attached. With, with those comments, we ask that that condition be added. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Bonar?
First, I find a great deal of difference between a vinyl panel and a LED lighted, animated sign in that same place. My first question was probably to staff, if each of the signs that are, that were or still are vinyl were turned into an animated LED, would they meet the separation of a typical billboard from each other?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. They would not meet the requirement. Signage facing I-15 for billboards is required to have a 750-foot distance separation between signs, and signs that are not facing, that are directed away from the freeway would require a 300-foot separation from each other if they were off-premise advertising signs.
Okay. I, I read each one of the signs that currently is, still is vinyl as a billboard. I'm sorry, if it's animated and lighted, I'm sorry, I see, I read that as a, as a billboard. Even if it's on-premise advertising, I read it as a billboard. And I'm sorry, I, I can't support the, the change of the vinyl to a LED animated sign.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Quinn?
Good evening, sir. I apologize for not attending your neighborhood meeting. I live at Rancho in Alta, and I was expecting to get a notification card, but I must have just missed it as a resident by just a few hundred feet. I have a couple of questions, first of all. The World Market Center has, I believe, is it two times a year that your place is full and the, the companies come in from out of state and they, they do their big shows, is what I'm trying to say? Is it twice a year still?
Mr. Chairman, through you, to Commissioner Quinn, that is correct.
Okay, that is correct. So, I just want to throw this at you, and I'm not trying to be funny in any way, and I'm just going to use this as an example. But let's say someone like Miley Cyrus decides to advertise for someone like one of your sofa companies, and let's say she's going to be on one of your beds, you know, or on one of your sofas. Is this something I'm going to see? You know, I'm concerned not about, like, here, here's how it is. I drive by the Rio all the time, and I see Penn and Teller every day on that wall, and it doesn't bother me. But what bothers me is not knowing. So, if somebody that is presumptuous, or somebody that is not appealing, or somebody is, somebody that's not something we want everyone to look at, is going to be laying on one of your beds for sale, or your sofas for sale, or I, I just feel that with the Constitution being so forthright, you can put anything you want up there, it scares me. you can put anything you want up there, it scares me. So can you convince me otherwise?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, through you to Commissioner Quinn. When we talk about the World Market Center, we're talking about a certain demographic of the country, because what we're talking about is the furniture industry. Primarily, the furniture industry is located in the southwest United States. What we're talking about are very, very conservative folks and a very, very conservative clientele. So to your analogy of including Miley Cyrus on a mattress, I would offer to you that celebrity endorsements of furniture already exist. Does Miley Cyrus do it? No. Why? Because Miley Cyrus does not resonate with that particular audience. Who does resonate? Jane Seymour, Kathy Ireland, El McPherson? We've seen those people advertised even on the sides of our buildings during the market, and without complaint. Let me offer a different example. We do have billboards on the site, which are leased out, very similar to everybody else in town who has billboards on their particular site. Those signs are off-premise signage. During one of our shows, one of the local gentleman's clubs advertised on one of those signs. Now, we have nothing to do with those signs, don't control content, can't control content, it's leased to an alternative vendor. The number of complaints that I fielded personally on that particular sign were enormous. In fact, I spent most of my market week dealing with that particular sign, so much so that we had to ask the sign vendor to take heed of the market dates, to remember who the audience is, and to adjust their advertising accordingly, because, again, we're dealing with a very, very specific group of people that come to town.
Yeah, Mr. Leeloo, can I interrupt for a moment? I apologize greatly. I really don't want to get into too much of the discussion over the content of the billboards. I just kind of like to stick to the issue as where we have it right now.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry I got off the subject.
Oh, no problem. I just, we're not...
Well, let me just ask one other question then, and it might be off the subject as well, maybe through the city attorney. So the nine months that there is no big, huge furniture markets going on in your thing, are you going to sell advertising to outdoor companies to advertise on your buildings?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Commissioner Quinn. I'm not sure I quite understand the question, so let me see if I can rephrase it to see if I understand it correctly. Are you asking me if we are going to advertise to off-premise signage vendors during our off-market times?
Yes.
No, we cannot. The staff condition was for on-premise signage only, and we are happy to stick with that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Trusdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. In one of these, let's say, ten square feet of the LED sign, how many lights are, how many light bulbs are on there? I mean, is there an industry standard that...
I'm sorry, are you finished with your question?
No, don't worry.
Okay. Chairman Flegas, through you to Commissioner Trusdale. The quick answer is, I don't know. It varies from sign to sign, Commissioner Trusdale. There are signs that have more space in between each light emitting diode than others. For instance, if you go to the Fremont Street Experience right now, you see a television-quality production, whereas if you went there five years ago, it wasn't quite television-quality. In fact, it was more reader-board-ish. So you really did not, you really see an evolution of the product, and it really depends on the type of product that's on the side of the wall in terms of what you see for spacing in between each light emitting diode.
And that spacing goes to the intensity of the sign, the effectiveness of the sign. If you, if you talk to some of the hotel, or the sign people for some of the hotels, they go with a certain grid pattern of LED bulbs. You go to some of the older billboard, LED billboards, they had a different quality of light, and every time there's a new quality comes out, then there's that argument whether you change it or not. But from what I understand, this can be hundreds of thousands of light diodes in a ten-by-ten square. I mean, it, and that concerns me, because if, if you were downtown and you look at the graphics on the new Downtown Grand, they put up vinyl, which is what we anticipated when we approved your deal, lit from the ground, and it's very subdued at night. You walk down the street, you do see it, just like you see the D and that, but it's not the same as if you go by on the strip at the corner of Flamingo when you look at MGM Grand's sign and the sheer lights. Now, staff, we have a code how we, how bright they can be, right? What, how is that done?
Mr. Chairman, through you, if I might. There is a limitation, both in the conditions of approval that are proposed for this application, and then also a standard that's entitled nineteen oh eight relative to super graphic signs, and the standard is three hundred nits.
And a nit roughly is a variable of lumen, right?
That is correct. There's a formula that we apply to convert that to lumens.
Okay. And, but they're fairly close numbers to each other?
Essentially, yes. Again, it's a standard that can be measured and can be quantified.
Okay. Then, just because I, it's important. This is a one-time mistake. If we make this mistake, we make it, and it's going to be a monumental time. I was out around the project today. I was sitting in Commissioner Quinn's front yard, taking some photos of the building, and you see, they're impressive photos. And I was surprised, because I went up on Valley View to the Springs Preserve and went out on the balcony, and the Springs Preserve is a quarter of a billion-dollar development here, and the idea of that balcony is a great view, and your building in the daylight is the most dominant building. At night, I, that picture right there, I think you'll, it may be an illuminated building that is unbelievably, so however this goes, I mean, however the approval happens, or it doesn't happen, or whatever the city decides, I've been concerned about the super graphics as we leave our commitment to the city, and I think so far, the economics haven't made sense to push the envelope. But LED is a changing technology, and it's not, not too far in the future, LEDs can be in, they'll be stitched into fabric, and it'll be a very inexpensive process of putting them up on buildings. And at that point, I think, is what we have to plan for now. If we just open the door today with an unlimited look, we won't recognize what we create downtown. The billboard industry won't recognize what we create. But going back to what if you light a product on the building, a, like a show card or a vinyl on a building, it, even if the bulbs are, get you to the lumens you're trying, the reflective light is not as great. But when you get to that light being cast out from the building, it is significant. And an example would be, because it took me a while to find, I couldn't find a light meter, that somebody says what, what nits and what lumens are, but I did find some LED lights that are, that are rated at two hundred and sixty-five lumens. Didn't sound like a lot. One bulb, one minor bulb at two hundred and sixty-five lumens becomes this. If you're driving down the freeway and you've got a half a million of these, or a million of them, I, I think we create an unsafe environment that rivals anything. It's not, it's not what you see in New York City, because those are basically a pedestrian corridor where everybody sees the Times Square lights. There are some cars, but it just, they drive in daylight. What you're looking to put here on the freeway will be catastrophic to the driving public. And the show is open for, say, four, six weeks a year, and you're going to have other shows. So let's say it's open six weeks, or eight weeks even. Means the rest of that time, you're still going to run ads, and you're still, you're going to fall within, I think, you'll do a very good job, and the owners will do a very good job, of falling within his on-premise content. You have a fine restaurant there called Mundo. I think they do a great job and have a good reputation. I am sure they get liquor support from various manufacturers to display their product. That same upward migration of that support becomes, okay, they sell Budweiser, is Budweiser an on-premise product or an off-premise product? I would, I would venture to say we will have a very large panel out there lit up with Budweiser on it, and we won't be able to do, and this isn't about the content, it's just, that's, that's an on-premise product, just like Coca-Cola is, just like Alien Tequila is another one that I know they, they feature at Mundo. So those other ten months of the year, I contend that's the kind of product, the citizens of Las Vegas and tourists that are coming in and out of the downtown, and the residents west of there, and the people that are availing themselves of the light shows at the concerts at Springs Preserve, is what they're going to see. And I'm very disappointed in the staff presentation, because we lack the technical skills to tell you what these signs are going to do. There's, the city has not brought in any lighting consultants to say, what are these lights going to be? Is this going to be safe? We're not even asking you, as a developer, to bring a lighting consultant down here. We do more than that when we have a noisy flag on West Sahara. But if, if this planning commission is going to deal with the technologies going forward, and we're going to help this, make recommendations to the city that really represent what, what we can do, we need the technical ability to bring this data to us with proper vetting, because I don't think we have enough before us. I don't think we have enough to say, am I voting to, on something that creates a public safety risk? And I drive that freeway four times a day. I'm over near Commissioner Quinn's all the time in those neighborhoods, and I was shocked when I'm driving the streets and actually stood there to take pictures of them, but they're going to cast a huge shadow or light glow into those neighborhoods, and it may not be intentional. I'm not saying anybody's doing anything intentionally to harm anybody, but we, as a planning commission, and the city of Las Vegas, and staff, and ultimately the commission, and hopefully not a court, needs to look at the technical issues that happen here. One of the signs that is in the presentation that I, shows a vinyl or a graphic covering the tops, the rooftops of the tent structures. I would hate to think that buried in this approval, suddenly we have the potential to light up the tent structures differently than, so I'm not saying you're here to do something inappropriate, I just don't think, we've gone down, we've just cracked the door on some of the super graphics, and right out the gate, we're looking at covering one of the largest buildings in the state in Nevada, or even the southwest, with two hundred and eighty thousand, is that roughly, am I right, staff? Or through you, Chairman? How many square feet of potential digital lighting?
It seems to be two thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight square foot LED.
No, that's just one of them that's going to go in the garage.
Yeah. Staff, do you have the total amount?
It, it's a big number. It's acres of sign. We'll agree on that.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goins, I think you had a couple of statements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real quick, I'm not going to be long on it. I can support the request, because I look at it this way. This World Market Center was the building that was used to craft this whole ordinance in the first place. I think it's been vetted pretty good through NDOT, which has set the standard for the, for the three hundred nits. And I also look at it as a comparison. I think, you know, you look up the strip at, you look up the street at the strip, and you look what's going on there, and I think downtown has to be a little bit lit to compete. But, but here's what my comparison is. You know, I've been down, I haven't seen a proliferation of accidents along I-15 where the city center has a very bright sign that's out there. Also on Las Vegas Boulevard at Harmon, right at, right at that intersection of the area is probably the brightest intersection in Las Vegas, and I, and I don't see the Highway Patrol or Metro on the news saying that because these signs are down there, we've got people running into each other this way and that way. And so I think clearly the agencies involved in this have set the standards. NDOT has set a standard, and then the city on top of that has set a limit. And so I think it clearly regulates this applicant on what they can do. I think the attorney said there will be no off-premise advertising on that. We've heard it on the record two or three times. We keep asking him, and he keeps telling us it's off-premise, and we almost, like, we don't believe it's going to happen. But I can tell you this, if they do put one up there, there's going to be heck to pay, and that pay may be monetary, or it may be some other way to mitigate that. Third, and I know I'm going off, off track here, we talk about content, but you could put Miley Cyrus in there on a bid, and somebody would hate it. You could put Mickey Mouse and showing the family going to Disneyland, and somebody would hate it. So you're not going to please everybody with what you put up on the building. But I think certainly staff, I want to commend staff for what they've done on this item. And of course, this is new territory, and we're going to learn a lesson from this, but we're going to have to put on our big-boy pants and make a decision, and big boy and big-women pants here, and put, make a decision tonight on what we're going to do. And I think staff has clearly vetted this. I think they've recommended approval on it. I think the Market Center has been with us through this from the beginning. And so with that, I, I can support the recommendation of staff, which is for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Slavon?
Yes, Chairman. Just a few comments. I didn't realize it was NDOT who set that out. I always wondered where that come from. But in the search of trying to figure out what nits are over the past few meetings, I went back and I did a little bit of research, because I was questioning what, what this was. I have a light meter that I can share with Commissioner Trusdale and everybody else, so we can test and we can show people what foot candles and lux is. This is about thirty foot candles in here, just going based on my experience. But when we're measuring, there's two different things we're looking at. We're looking at luminance, which is a measure of the perceived brightness of a surface, which differs from illuminance, which is a measure of the amount of light falling onto a surface. Luminance, illuminance is a key measurement when analyzing surfaces which emit light, like a computer or television screen. And then illuminance, I'm sorry, illuminance is what allows us to see items which don't emit light, light and illumination coming from other sources which reflects off the objects, rendering it visible to us. I've researched this, and I pulled up a study, a couple of studies, and one thing that I noticed was, some of these signs will go up to thirteen to fifteen thousand nits. Now, thirteen to fifteen thousand net sounds really high, but it's all based on the surrounding and the light that's coming from around the source. So if you have a real bright location on Las Vegas Boulevard in Tropicana, and you're shooting a sign at a thousand nits towards somebody, it's not as blinding as if you're on a highway and you're shooting a five hundred net sign towards them. Your pupils are large, trying, trying to compensate for the darkness, and then all of a sudden, you get hit with this bright light, and you momentarily get blinded, and your eyesight goes directly towards that sign. So being that this is in a location right along a highway... So being that this is in a location right along a highway, I really don't know what the correct answer is. It seems like in other bright areas such as New York and Illinois, and cities all around Illinois, they limited it to 125 on up to 250 nits. So with us being at 300 nits, we're already brighter than many other cities who have been working on this for six to eight years. There's another issue which Commissioner Truesdale brought up, which is light trespass. And it's a new term coined due to these LED signs. Light trespass is measured in foot candles 300 to 700 feet away. And it's kinda hard, you might think that it'd be difficult to measure this, but really it's not. You have them turning on their standard brightness, put on the sign that they would normally be putting on, and then you go into the neighborhood, and you have them kill that sign, and you take your foot candle meter, and you hold it in the air. And if it is pushing out more than .1 to .3 foot candles into a neighborhood across that highway, it's too much light trespass. So before, I know it's getting real technical, but before I could, I wouldn't feel comfortable in approving a sign like this, I'd like to see us add a condition for light trespass, because if all the neighbors start complaining that it's too bright, we won't have any mechanism in place to control that or to measure that. So that would be one condition. And then number two, maybe possibly taking a look at the nits, and is the nits appropriate at 300, when a lot of these cities are at anywheres from 150 to 250? So that is my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just a few brief comments. You know, the planning commission has consistently pulled back on the push for super graphics, and something that Commissioner Truesdale said ranked true with me, and that is, often we have drainage studies, we have traffic studies to look to. In the future, it would be helpful for me going in if we could have some type of light study, so that we would have a better idea of what we're looking at. And I guess at this point, I'm just not convinced that the proposed signs would conform with Title 19, or at least with the previous master sign approvals, and therefore, I can't support this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Director?
There's just one item that I wanted to clarify relative to one of the visuals that was shown on the screen, and that is relative to signage on the existing tent facilities. In the application package for this master sign plan, there is no signage that is indicated on the tents. And so staff would consequently not permit any signage on the tents per this sign application package. The signage that is permitted is identified as being on buildings A, B, and C, and the parking structure, as well as a freestanding sign, a shorter freestanding sign in front. The sign package does not show any signage on the tents, and so consequently, we could not approve any sign permits.
And Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Just, one of my biggest concerns here is, we tried to make sure we addressed all the signage on the Water District Building. We had an on-premise sign with off-premise, there are an off-premise sign with on-premise digital, and what we wound up with is an off-premise sign plus an on-premise digital that's doing off-premise advertising. And nothing against City Attorney's Office or the documents that were done for this project, but we spent all this time going through it, and at the end of the day, somebody goes, oh, we missed it in this document, and they get it. I don't wanna be the one that says, we missed something here. And then, because no one's ever gonna take this down unless it's to put something better up, once it goes up. We have not had a capacity to make people tear unfit buildings down. Abandoned buildings and neighborhoods, we're slow to ever respond, because those are property right issues. We just, and I believe, we don't wanna take those away. But no developer's gonna go spend three, four, five, six, eight million dollars, 10 million dollars, whatever it is for these signs, and if we don't like what we see at the end, they can hire a lot of firms like yours and about 10 other firms out in New York before they would ever consider removing anything. So that's my concern, because we did make a mistake on the other building, I think, and we wound up with twice as much signage as we ever thought. And it, off-premise, every day when I drive by it, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm gonna go ahead now, call for a motion. Does any of the commissioners wish to make a motion?
Well, I think through you, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna, you know, I've heard a lot of testimony today, heard from a good friend, Trinity, that proffered up some explanation. And I saw Commissioner Truesdale with a flashlight, but neither one of those are an expert in this field, but yet we've got the recommendation of NDOT, and those that are the experts in the field. And I don't know if 300 nits is equal to what I see down on Las Vegas Boulevard in Harmon, which again, I say, I think is the brightest intersection I see. And I don't think these lights are brighter than what I saw on Good Morning America, where they're about to do some federal legislation on these kids that are doing these laser beams up to the aircraft. And so I don't think this building lit up is gonna cause a pilot to crash or get in his way. And again, I compare it with something that I think has already been vetted, and it's been put up by experts, and that's the sign off the strip in the one downtown. And again, I don't see a proliferation of accidents on I-15 in that corridor, and I don't see a bunch at Las Vegas Boulevard in Sahara. And so I think, I feel comfortable supporting staff's recommendation, and I also feel comfortable with the experts that staff utilized to craft this and get us to that point. And so with that, I will follow staff's recommendation on item 35 MSP 50453, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, may I offer an amendment to the motion? If Commissioner Moody will entertain it, or not Commissioner Moody, Commissioner Goins?
I'll listen.
I'd like to amend the motion to allow the vinyl to be lighted but not animated.
Condition one indicates there to be static images, so that may take care of that one. One suggestion I was gonna make, Mr. Chairman, would be that perhaps we can better specify as to what buildings those signs would be on, you know, since they did reference that Verizon one that's on the tent, just to maybe make sure that we know or that they know that they're only to be on the, you know, concreted buildings, A, B, and C, I think the director indicated.
So we wanna, we wanna designate-
Just to better clarify the fact that they're not to be on the tents, and that they would only be on those brick and mortar buildings? I don't know, the director had indicated the building-
I could support that. I could support that.
What I would mention to you, relative to the signage on the tents, that again, we would go by the tables that are included in the application package, which does not identify the tents, but rather Buildings A, B, C, the parking structure, and then the freestanding sign on Grand Central Parkway.
Is the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, can we get one clarification?
Certainly.
Before we vote, and I have no problem, Commissioner Goins refers to NDOT. Can staff answer? I don't believe NDOT has any control over on-premise signage. Do they?
I don't believe that they do have any control over on-premise signage. In the state administrative code, I believe it refers only to off-premise signs that are within 660 feet of a highway.
So even on-premise within 660, they have no say on it, right?
They would not have any say, I don't believe. However, we do have a condition that if there is any jurisdictional requirements from NDOT, that they would be subject to that.
If they don't exist today, I'm just trying to clarify that we get proper data out there. And Mr. Chairman-
Thank you, Commissioner.
I was just gonna say, I think NDOT does have the standard with regard to the six seconds between the actual changing of images. I think that's-
I believe that's a condition as well.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Goins, go ahead and make your motion.
And as I understand it, we are, through Director Flynn, we are adding a condition regarding no signage on the tents? Is that what I'm hearing?
Actually, that condition would not be needed, because again, the tables in the backup material specify only Buildings A, B, C, and the garage. So we don't need to include that as part of the motion, because it is clear in the application package that no signage is permitted on the tents.
Well, then my motion would be for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion fails, five to two. I'll entertain a different motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to, for denial, subject to all the comments raised during our discussions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote, noting that a yes vote is for denial. Please post. Motion to deny item 35 carries, five to two.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this item will go forward with a recommendation of denial to the City Council at their January 22 meeting.
Thank you. Move on now to item 37, which is renote, excuse me, SUP 50824, the applicant owner, 217 LVBLLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 41,566 square foot liquor establishment tavern use with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation where a 1,500-foot distance separation is required from a similar use at 217 North Las Vegas Boulevard in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this proposed special use permit will establish a tavern use located within the private outdoor plaza area, which was part of a previously approved site plan review, SDR 50826. The proposed use will operate adjacent to the existing legal non-conforming tavern, which also has legal non-conforming, non-restricted gaming. And that's therefore the waiver of it from that existing use from the current proposed use. The proposed tavern will be limited to the private outdoor plaza area and will not entitle any expansion in the existing gaming floor area confined to the existing structure. The proposed tavern use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with existing and surrounding land uses, and staff recommends approval.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
I'll be abstaining on this matter, as I have ongoing business relationship with the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner Sloman. Can I hear from the applicant, please?
Sure. Todd Kessler, 300, excuse me, Las Vegas Boulevard North, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89101, here on behalf of the applicant. As for staff indicated, first of all, good evening, hello to everyone. As staff indicated, this is somewhat of a matter that was running consecutive with our private outdoor plaza that was approved by City Council last month to allow certain events, such as the winter wonderland, which we're calling the Cold Spike, which begins on Friday with ice skating and other things. And this is the tavern or the liquor component that goes with it. The waiver is somewhat unique in the sense that we're getting a waiver from our other establishment, which is the Gold Spike, but it goes back to some licensing grandfather's issues that occurred as the code was adopted. I'm happy to answer any questions, but we would say, ask you to approve subject to all staff conditions.
Thank you, sir. Does any members of the public wish to be heard on this? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
I just wanted to make a comment, Mr. Kessler, that this new project of yours will be, in fact, as handicap accessible and friendly as your beautiful container park.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goins, I'll entertain a motion.
Item 37, move for approval of bay entry notification, SUP 50824, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Please vote.
If you get any blinking ice cubes in there, make sure you keep them under 300 nits.
Yeah, we're opening Friday with ice skating.
Please post. Motion to approve item 37 carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Sloman, please.
Mr. Chairman, this item goes forward to the January 22 City Council meeting.
Moving on now to item 41, applicant owner is the 11th Street Tavern LLC, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for the proposed 1,487 square foot expansion of a 2,980 square foot legal non-conforming liquor establishment tavern use on 0.33 acres at 124 South 11th Street in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report?
Mr. Chair, I'll be abstaining on this matter, as I have ongoing business relationship with the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner Sloman. Go ahead, staff.
Mr. Chairman, the proposal is to expand the current legal non-conforming tavern by 1,487 square feet, which is approximately not 49% of the existing square footage of the legal non-conforming tavern, and does not include any alterations to the existing site access, parking lot, or landscaping. The proposed expansion can be conducted in a manner that remains harmonious and compatible with the existing and surrounding land uses, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Todd Kessler, 300, Las Vegas Boulevard North. Yes, I'm here on behalf of the applicant today. This is the old bunkhouse saloon that many of us know and love from downtown. Used to be owned by a judge, and a gold old hangout for folks. This is simply an expansion of it. When we began our demolition, we found it was existing through different structures. We took the opportunity therefore to kinda upgrade it and make it a little larger, and are here just today to expand that. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but we'd ask that you approve subject to staff conditions.
Thank you. Would any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commission. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, just a question for, I understand the Gold Spike, I understand the container park and the concerns, but almost every project is just a tavern and tavern. Why not, why not just do a master zoning overlay that says taverns everywhere in the property zone by your group? Wouldn't that be a simpler way to approach this?
No, I think we have a very-
I think we're getting tavern to death. And I do, I did go to the container park, it's great, I still have a question mark with the tot lot in the middle, but hopefully it works. But everything's a tavern down here, and we haven't seen retail yet, other than the container park. We're not seeing some of those other uses. I know you've got some great employees, but how much can they drink?
This is an existing tavern that's been here a long time, so it's not really a new tavern. But we have a lot of projects that cover a lot of arrays, from office to dog parks to various other opportunities, and there's a lot of development. This is in an area that needs redevelopment. And again, exists today, but this is an area of Fremont Street, in my mind, needs redevelopment. Not to say that taverns need to be there to conduct redevelopment, but there's a lot of other things that are occurring down in that area that will be fun and coming forward, too, that will probably be in the tavern world. But we have some ideas and some thoughts about this area of town, and again, live music is missed downtown, and this is a great opportunity to have that.
I'm not saying it is, but isn't, but it seems like this would be, I guess, an appropriate place for the city to really explore an overlay zone, that-
And I'm happy to have discussions with any staff member that cares to talk about that.
Thank you. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Commissioner Goins?
I just had one question on the plan. What is a pass-through window?
It allows for pass-through, I mean, to come up and take an order.
Well, it's on the interior?
Yes.
Okay. I thought it was a walk-up self-service.
No, no.
It's on the interior to pass to the exterior.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Goins?
Mr. Chairman, on item 41, SDR 51434, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Please post. Motion to approve, item number forty-one carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Sloman.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Moving on to related items forty-two and forty-three, beginning with item forty-two, VAR five-one-six-two-two. The applicant owner is Southwestern Holdings LLC for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a five-foot side yard setback where ten feet is required at four-eight-three-three West Charleston Boulevard in Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number forty-three, SDR five-one-six-two-one, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-nine-square-foot retail building with a waiver to allow a zero-foot wide landscape buffer where five feet is required along a portion of the west property line. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed commercial structure is compatible with the C commercial land use designation and is in context with the commercial development in the area. The applicant has requested a variance to allow a five-foot side yard setback where ten-foot feet is... ten-foot setback is required. Staff supports this request as the site is challenged with a unique topographic feature and has provided a design concept that minimizes the impact on the adjacent commercial development to the west. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of both of the site development plan review and the associated variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant? And sir, if you'll state your name and address, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Todd Vedalago with Vedalago Patch Architects, thirty-five thirty-five Executive Terminal Drive, eight-nine-zero-five-two, representing the applicant. As a point of reference, this site location is the former Old Pancake House Restaurant, and before that building meant its demise. This proposed structure is being located on the exact same footprint of the former building. Therefore, the wall locations on the setback requirements is essentially representing the former existing condition, other than now it's a new building. We worked with staff on the design, and we concur with their recommendation.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter?
Thank you, Todd. Far on two-forty North Nineteenth Street. Now, I'm gonna say, that really looks nice.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commission. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you. If none of my commissioners have anything to say, this is the old Pancake House location that was burned down, and this applicant and his landscape and his landscape architect has done the best they can to make it look the best it can look. And I thank you for the work that you've put into it. If nobody has anything else to say, I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Nobody else ready? Number forty-two, variance five-one-six-two-two, following all staff's recommendations for approval.
Please vote. Please post. Motion to approve, item forty-two carries.
Thank you. And following staff's recommendations for approval, again, number forty-three, which is the partner item of number forty-two, SDR five-one-six-two-one, to follow staff's recommendations for approval. And thank you for doing such a nice job on this project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Please post. Motion to approve, item forty-three carries.
Mr. Chairman, these items will go forward to the January twenty-second City Council meeting.
Thank you. Moving on now to item number forty-four, which is VAR five-one-six-eight-five. The applicant is Bob Taylor's Ranch House. The owner is Helen L. Thomas. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a sign area of three-hundred-and-seventy-four square feet, where one-hundred-and-fifty-two square feet is the maximum allowed, and to locate an electronic message unit one-hundred-and-seventy feet away from a residentially-zoned property where at least two-hundred feet is required at six-two-five-zero Rio Vista Street in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may I have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to install a three-foot by twenty-two-foot electronic message unit along top of the existing freestanding sign. The proposal would increase the total height of the sign to forty feet and a total sign area of three-hundred-and-seventy-four square feet. The freestanding sign would not meet Title nineteen point oh-eight-one-twenty minimum requirements for distance separation and sign area. Therefore, staff is recommending denial. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please? If you guys will state your name and addresses, please?
Jeff Special, Bob Taylor's Ranch House, sixty-two-fifty Rio Vista Street.
Randy Rosnow, Patrick Sign Company, fifty-one-fifteen South Arville.
Thank you. Go ahead and tell us about what you're trying to do.
Well, the first part of the denial was per the square footage of the sign face. Is that correct?
That's...
Is that my understanding?
That's basically what I believe the backup documentation says.
Yeah, we've been working with the planners and Councilman Ross on that, and the funny part of this whole thing is that that sign size was approved prior to us building the sign. We've had a permit in hand when this all came up after the fact, so it's a little late now to say, hey, we got this big sign. Now, it's too big, take it back down. So, that was our stance on that matter. And they said they would relook at it and say, okay, fine, we approved it, we permitted it, let's just forget about that part of it. And that was my understanding as of this morning.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? I apologize. Did I cut you off, or were you done?
Well, no, there's a second part to this.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Yeah, the second part of this was the distance between residential and the message unit. We want to get a little bit closer than two-hundred feet to one area zoned residential. Currently, the properties are vacant. There's no homes. The sign is completely out of view from that area of... I don't know if I can show photos here somehow?
Yes, right there by the other mic on the table there.
A little background is...
Could you flip it around? Thank you.
Okay. Previously, the ranch house had this off-premise sign. Had it for years. I had an agreement with a dealership to have it there. Well, that agreement went south, and the sign has since been removed. This was the ranch house's only real form of advertisement to traffic. They have none other existing, so therefore, we built the new sign, which is proposed to look like this on his property. Here is the actual sign as it was built without the message unit. You can note all the trees to the south of that sign. The residential area that would be within two-hundred feet of this sign is directly behind these trees. And I have a view... this would be looking at the sign from that residential area within two-hundred feet. And you're hard-pressed to even see the sign from that viewpoint, even though that it's winter and a lot of the leaves are gone at this point. You're hard-pressed to even know where that sign is. And also, the message unit will be facing to the right and to the left of that residential unit, so they won't have any direct view of that message unit. So, that's pretty much our argument. Picture of the sign from the Tenaya Overpass over the new two-fifteen. The sign is right here at the tip of that arrow. It's not a great big sign that jumps out and grabs and says, hey, this is the only thing I can see, you know, it takes over everything. It's not that big. And because the location of the ranch house, it's not on a main street, it's kind of tucked back off into a kind of a residential area, so to speak, I think people need to be able to find it in order for him to be successful. He's been there for sixty years, and we'd like to see him there another sixty. And every little bit that we can do to help him, I think, is reasonable in this situation.
Thank you, sir. Do any members of... oh, I'm sorry, I keep cutting you off.
One more photo of how the sign sits above the sound wall for traffic. Even though it's a forty-foot pylon sign, it's just hovering above that sign... sound wall.
Yeah, this is the sign...
This is if you're traveling east on the two-fifteen, or where you will be.
Yes, it's well up and off of the road, so, I mean, we just need a little more pop to get people to see it. Maybe give them a direction of how to get to the restaurant from the two-fifteen, advertise his events, maybe some specials, get some more traffic over there. I think that's all I have to say.
Okay, I'll try this again. Hopefully, I'm not cutting you off. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you. So, when I came to Las Vegas nineteen years ago, I think Bob Taylor's Ranch House was the first restaurant that my wife and I ate at. And I swear to you, we got lost on our way there.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't want to get lost again. I see two issues. You're losing your sign with the Bozarth dealership. Is that correct?
That's already gone.
And with the approved sign and the improvements that have been made, the sound wall and the location from the freeway, it's still not visible. And so, you're asking for a way to illuminate that sign a little bit to draw some attention.
The sign is visible and illuminated, but unlike the nits before, it doesn't give off any of those, whatever those are. But we're just asking for a little reader board on top so that we may advertise specials Monday night, prime rib night, Tuesday, you know, to get that traffic back there that we may lose by losing the sign off of Ann Road and Ninety-five.
There have been five or six protests. I'm not overly concerned with those protests because you've been there a long time. In my opinion, you have presented evidence of a unique and extraordinary circumstance that justifies approval, and so you will see my support on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Moody, we're ready for a motion?
Regarding item forty-four, VAR five-one-six-eight-five, the motion is for approval, subject to all conditions.
Please vote. Please post. Motion to approve, item forty-four carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item forty-five, which is VAR five-one-seven-four-four. The applicant owner is George Knott LLC for possible action on request for a variance to allow a five-foot yard... excuse me, a five-foot side and rear yard setback where ten feet is the minimum required for... excuse me, I'm gonna start over on this one, 'cause, okay, this is item number forty-five, VAR five-one-seven-four-four, applicant owner, George Knott LLC. For possible action on request for a variance to allow a five-foot side and rear yard setback where ten feet is the minimum required for a proposed one-thousand-and-ninety-six-square-foot accessory structure, class-two garage at three-six-eight-zero Mooncrest Circle in Ward Four, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, and the applicant has created self-imposed hardship by proposing to construct a garage that fails to meet the current side and rear setback requirements. The proposed garage could be redesigned in an alternative location that will allow for conformance with Title Nineteen requirements. In view of the absence of any hardship imposed by the site's physical characteristics, is concluded that the applicant's hardship is preferential in nature. Therefore, staff recommends denial of this variance request. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicant, please. And sir, if you'll state your name and address, please?
Jason Mayhew with Jam Residential Design and Drafting, six-five-two Middlegate, Henderson, Nevada, eight-nine-zero-one-one, speaking for the applicant. The applicant purchased the property in two thousand and eleven, and when he purchased the property, there was an existing three-foot side and rear setback that was per Title Nineteen. When he purchased the property, he had plans. That was another reason he purchased the property, was the ability to build a detached garage on that side of the house. In December of last year, the Title Nineteen changed the zoning on the... on his property, which then required a ten-foot wide setback. The owner was not aware that the Title Nineteen had been changed, and his setbacks had been changed to ten feet. When he approached me in March to provide plans for this is when we found out this. We did some plans for a variance. Back then, he brought it to his neighbor to discuss it, and the neighbor had some concerns. Ended up being redesigned three or four times to try to help eliminate the neighbor's concerns. Owner did build a frame on his property where this would be located to show the location and size of it for his neighbor also. So, we would conclude that he does have a hardship and would like to recommend approval on this, please.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Come on up, sir, if you could state your name and address, please?
It's on. No, thank you. My name is Francisco Jimenez. I live at thirty-six eighty-five Mooncrest Circle. I am diagonally opposed to these residents. The problem that we have is that these are, and I understand Director Fag already have received a letter and has passed it to you with pictures where we have. These are all custom homes subdivision, fifteen homes. All of them have three-car garages. In these residents, there is, at the beginning, there were, I understand, a gentleman and his wife were supposed to be the daughter and son-in-law of these gentlemen. Now, there is only a single lady living there. A thousand-and-ninety-seven square feet is probably enough for four additional cars, and they already have a three-car garage. There's seven cars for a single person living there. We maintain to you that the reason they need all these big garage there is because, as the letter stated, they have been running an illegal operation with Arizona license, dealer license plate, and they want this to store cars there and to have a licensed operation of selling cars. This will bring down the values of this subdivision, and most of... all the neighbors I have talked to, we are opposed that you grant this waiver and allow them to build this garage. Thank you very much.
Before you leave, where is your home in relation to this?
It's diagonally across the street.
Directly across the street.
If I go on my... on the front of my house and look to my right, that's where they are.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Sir, come on up. State your name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name's Alan Zellifer. My address is thirty-six eighty-four Mooncrest. My wall is the wall that will abut this garage. The applicant did come and see me last year, and I informed him that a five-foot setback from my backyard, it'd look like a warehouse. There's my pool there, my barbecue, my yard, excuse me. So, every time I go in my backyard, I'd have this warehouse. I did ask him if he could build it smaller. I'm not sure why he can't, but if he does build it smaller, then I'd have nothing to say about it, 'cause it'd be within the setbacks. So, from my point of view, I know the land's flat. There's no issues with angles. He could certainly shrink the garage size down a bit and be done with this five-foot setback issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. I have a couple of questions pertaining to this. First of all, I believe there's an issue with a shed on the southwest corner. What's the status of that now?
It's a plastic shed that, from what I was told, it's an eight-foot by eight-foot about plastic shed that was on the property when he bought it. It will be removed.
And then, I don't know if you can answer this, but I heard statements about running some type of business out of there. Is there a business being operated out of that?
To my knowledge, no, there's no business being operated out of the garage.
Now, you mentioned he wanted a tool shop. I mean, what's the purpose of the tool shop?
He has lots of cars that he fixes up. He has an auto shop here in town, but he has his personal cars that he fixes up. And to my knowledge, that's what I was told that this was gonna be for, for his own personal use of fixing up, maybe restoring a car. The height of the structure was modified from the original design. The whole rear of the structure has a very, almost no roof on it, lowered, and only the front part where he could pull a car in would have a taller roof on it. And the neighbor's property right next door is, the owner's property is two foot lower than the neighbor's property also. So he has eight foot on his side of the wall and six foot on the other side of the wall.
Thank you. Any other commissioners wish to be heard on this? I'm kinda torn on this one. I really, I'm gonna kinda, you know, as far as my support on this, I'm gonna defer to your neighbor on this one. It just looks like he's gonna, it just have that, you know, you guys seem to have fairly large lots, and you're just gonna have that huge structure abutting up against the wall. I don't think I can support this.
There are three other houses in the neighborhood that have five-foot setbacks on, large, two, two, one has a large garage to have other accessory structures.
I'll entertain a motion if there's no further comments.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I understand the applicant and I understand staff's recommendation, but I would move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Please vote. Motion to deny, Carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Moving on to related items forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight, VAR five-one-seven-six-five, the applicant owner, CNC Medical Plaza LLC. For possible action on request for a variance to allow seven parking spaces where thirteen parking spaces are the minimum required at sixteen forty East Charleston Boulevard, Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending denial. Related item number forty-seven, VAR five-one-seven-six-six. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a five-foot side yard setback where ten feet is the minimum required and to allow a trash enclosure eighteen feet from residentially zoned property where fifty feet is the minimum required, staff is recommending denial. Item forty-eight, SDR five-one-seven-six-four. For possible action on request for a site development plan review for a proposed eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight square foot expansion to an existing one-thousand-six-hundred-seventy-seven square foot medical office with waivers to allow a zero-foot wide landscape buffer along the north and south property lines where fifteen feet is the minimum required. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report?
Mr. Chairman, the project as proposed fails to comply with Title Nineteen requirements for building setbacks, residential adjacency setbacks, parking standards, landscape buffer requirements, and planting materials, all of which is precipitated from the applicant's desire to overbuild the subject site, as is evidenced by the associated variances and waivers. As the applicant has created self-imposed hardships that are preferential in nature, staff cannot support the variances and associated site development plan review and is recommending denial of all applications. Please note that additional letters of support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Sheldon Cohen, ninety-seventeen South Pecos, representing the applicant. The applicant wishes to expand their business to better serve the community. This is a family medical clinic, and they definitely serve most of the Hispanic community around them. Currently, they have a small waiting room, and as you know, in this kind of type of community, when one person goes to the doctor, so does the whole family. So they're trying to expand that in this build-out, and also they're trying to add three more exam rooms in, in their hopes of better pushing people through the process instead of letting them sit there in their cars in the parking lot at the same time. Currently, the cars park very close to Charleston Boulevard, and this expansion will allow the cars to be further back and definitely delineate what their parking is from the neighbors. Currently, the neighbors do have signs in front of their parking to prevent any clients of this project of using that parking. The goal is, is mainly just to further their business in that area and provide as much possible to the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Does any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter?
Thank you. Todd Follow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. We need more parking here.
Thank you. Does any other members of the public wish to be heard on this? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Slomson?
Yes, Chairman, through you. I reached out to you earlier. Sheldon left you a voicemail because I got my agenda and got back in town and was reading through it, and yours was one of the last I hit. It was, it was one, the first I hit, so I could have met with you out there and took a look at this closer. There's a lot of stuff going on in the site. And whenever I printed the agenda and brought it with me, I still had a lot of questions on site. So, I mean, if you wanted to go forward as is, you wouldn't see my support. If you wanted to hold in advance for thirty days, talk, talk with me, show me on site what you're doing, see if we can do something with that, that site plan, explain it a little bit better, then maybe we could look at, maybe supporting that. But as it stands today, I couldn't.
We would be all for--
Do you want to have this obeyed?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Commissioner Slomson, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item forty-six, VAR five-one-seven-six-five, I would make a motion to hold this item in advance until our next regularly scheduled planning commission hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote.
Which is January fourteenth.
Motion to obey, item number forty-six, to the January fourteen, two thousand and fourteen meeting, has been approved. Go ahead for item number forty-seven, Commissioner?
Yes, Chairman, on item number forty-seven, VAR five-one-seven-six-six, I would make a motion to hold this item in advance for thirty days till our next meeting, January fourteenth.
Thank you. Please vote. Please post. Motion to obey, item number forty-seven, to the January fourteen, two thousand and fourteen meeting, approved. If you'll do item forty-eight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number forty-eight, SDR five-one-seven-six-four, I would make a motion to hold this in advance for thirty days till our next scheduled meeting, January fourteenth.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Please post. Motion to obey, item number forty-eight, to the January fourteen, two thousand and fourteen meeting, Carries. At this time, we'll go ahead and take a short break.
We're gonna go ahead and start in about a minute. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna get started again, and we're gonna begin with item number forty-nine, which is VAR five-one-seven-seven-two. The applicant owner is Stephen Paul. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a thirty-foot rear yard setback where a thirty-five foot, uh, where thirty-five feet is required for a proposed single-family dwelling at thirteen forty-one Crystal Mountain Drive in Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site currently consists of an undeveloped point-four-seven acre lot located on a cul-de-sac at thirteen forty-one Crystal Mountain Drive within a gated residential subdivision. The applicant proposes to develop a four-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-five square foot, single-family residence located within the Residence Estate zoning district. An alternative floor plan that increases the rear yard setback by five feet would allow for conformance to Title Nineteen requirements. In view of the absence of any hardship imposed by the site's physical characteristics, it has concluded that the applicant's hardship is preferential in nature and is thereby outside the realm of the NRS Chapter Two-Six-eight for granting of the variance, and staff recommends denial. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, and sir, if you'll give us your name and address, please? Uh, sorry, you need to turn your mic on, number one. If you can do that again, I'd appreciate it.
Try it this way. There you go. Robert Ballou, fifty-one-twenty-five West Oquendo, representing the applicant, Stephen Paul. Okay, uh, when we, when Steve purchased this property, wanted to design this house, um, the original plans that we got showed a twenty-foot setback on a variance that had been approved, uh, early on. I understand that was not, uh, followed through with. Uh, when we called down to talk to the planners, misinterpretation on the rear setback, guilty. Um, so we've got a thirty-foot rear setback to the rear wall of the residence itself with a ten-foot patio. Uh, patio stays within the fifteen-foot rear setback, but it is a ten-foot wide patio room in the depth of the house. Uh, there are two bedrooms in the, uh, northwest corner, and then the living room space takes up the center portion where the patio juts out a little bit, and then the master bedroom takes up this, uh, south area, uh, by the courtyard. And then we've placed a casita on the front, but we're trying to keep this back corner, the southwest corner, open for a pool and a garden area. Due to the cul-de-sac and the depth of the house and placing the garage in front, we would end up with a very thin, long house covering the whole, uh, the frontage, uh, for the most part, and that the owner did want to create a private courtyard, uh, off the
Excuse me, sir. Uh, when you're pointing at that screen, we have no earthly idea what you're doing, so if you can put your plans down on the table, that would be a little bit more helpful for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn that mic on, please.
He's okay.
Okay. Sorry, I'm not very technical here. Okay, um, the thirty-five-foot setback is this line or the front of this pink area. Uh, the five foot that we're requesting or the thirty-foot, uh, variance shows this strip, about seventy feet by the five feet length, and we still have a ten-foot, uh, deep patio across the, the west, trying to get some sun control, uh, as the sun sets. Uh, due to the twenty-foot setback on the front, it's actually forty, but, uh, from the street, uh, back a curb, and placing the garage in the front, uh, like I said, the house was, um, designed so that we could create this large area for the pool and the garden in the back and create a private courtyard for the master suite off the front. In the past, when they had, did have the twenty-foot, uh, approved, mistaken assumption that we would have no problem getting a thirty-foot request approved, and staff, when I met with them, seemed to feel the same way, but when they put it through the process, came out with staff recommending denial, although they did give conditions if it was approved, that we would certainly be willing to, uh, follow in terms of the drainage, uh, and any other conditions that play on us.
Thank you, sir. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst commissioners. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you. Um, um, I was out, I drove out there the other day, and what I noticed first and foremost is that, um, and I think my commissioners can see on their screen, that your fence is raised by about two feet or two more blocks higher in the back than the, the fence, um, to the side of you. Am I correct in saying that?
I believe that's the case, yeah, but
Yeah. So, my point is, is that whoever builds directly behind you is gonna have, um, you know, the benefit that the five feet that you're requesting is not really gonna be as noticeable or as, um, you know,
Impact.
Snoopy, or whatever you wanna say, into their yard, because you've already, um, made the fence higher, which is something we might have asked you to do to ensure that this gets passed. Um, the second thing is, is I think that the, the, the personal preferences is that you choose to have five e- less feet in the back than ten, and, um, that's, in my opinion, your business and, and not mine. Um, the, the way the house sits in the front i- is beautiful, and it's very well maintained. There's nothing directly behind you, there's nothing, uh, to the side of you, and I think at this point, um, if I have, there's no one else that wishes to speak on this, um, I took a really good look at it, but what my main point is, is that the wall's already built higher, and so therefore, sir, um, if you put in a pool and a little patio, you've already obstructed the, the, uh, what's ever gonna bother somebody directly behind you, if there's going to be somebody directly behind you. So, um, if nobody else wishes to comment on this, I'm going to, um, follow my recommendation, which would be for approval this evening of these, uh, five extra feet.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote.
Thank you.
Please post. Motion to approve item forty-nine carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Moving on now to item fifty is VAR five-one-seven-eight-five. The applicant is Nevada Career Institute. The owner is Southwest College of Medical Dental Assistants and Practical Nurses. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow three-hundred-and-nine parking spaces, where a minimum three-hundred-and-ninety-five are required, at four-six-two-four-two, four-six-six-zero North Rancho Drive. This is in Councilman Anthony's Ward. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, staff would like to note that the, uh, that the item should have been advertised as a variance to allow three-hundred-and-nine onsite parking spaces, where three-hundred-and-eighty are required. As this is a less intense variance than what was noticed, uh, this item can proceed forward tonight. Uh, if it should move forward to City Council, we will add a note to it, uh, indicating that it's three-hundred-and-eighty required. Uh, the applicant is proposing to locate, uh, within a previously approved ten-building office complex. Currently, the si- site consists of three vacant, single-story buildings. The proposed business school will locate within the three vacant buildings. There will be no proposed changes to the seven undeveloped pad sites, as those sites will remain future office buildings. The parking requirements for the business school use is more intense than that of the office, and the change will create a parking shortage, uh, per Title Nineteen point-one-two. As such, a variance is required to reduce the parking by seventy-one spaces. The variance requested due to a site design and not the physical characteristics of the land, and therefore, a hardship is so- is self-imposed, and denial is recommended. Please note, we did receive an adi- uh, additional protest since publication.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. My name is Sergey Kessetrekian, and I work for Nevada Career Institute. Um, our address is thirty-two-thirty-one North Decatur Boulevard, Las Vegas. I, uh, in an effort to keep myself on track, I've prepared a brief statement, so I, I, if you don't mind, I'm gonna read it to you. Uh, Nevada Career Institute is currently located at thirty-two-thirty-one North Decatur Boulevard, Las Vegas, Nevada. It, it's currently located in the Red Feather Shopping Center. Uh, it occupies approximately nineteen thousand square feet. Uh, Nevada Career Institute, the college was established in Las Vegas in nineteen ninety-three, and for the past twenty years, we've been leaders in delivering specialized healthcare training and pro- providing quality training and education to communities of Las Vegas and its surrounding areas. We offer diploma programs that are career-focused in the allied health field, such as medical assisting, medical office specialist, that's a billing and coding, uh, program, surgical technology, and in the year of two thousand and eleven, we received approval from Nevada State Board of Nursing and launched the practical nursing program. The program, the PN program, Practical Nursing Program continues to produce graduates who have taken and passed the NCLEX PN licensure examination at a rate that exceeds the national pass rate. Our schools, the Nevada NCI's, uh, pass rate is at eighty-five percent, and the national rate is at eighty-three percent. In two thousand and eight, Southwest College, DBA Northwest College, uh, acquired Nevada Career Institute so that they could better, uh, serve students with desire to attend a well-established educational institution. Uh, Northwest College, or Southwest College of Business, was founded in nineteen sixty-six by Marcia First. Mrs. First and her family have been involved in the allied health field since the early fifties. From the very beginning, Mrs. First's goal was to provide quality education in the healthcare field to people who could not otherwise attend college or were in need of a career and not just a job. In nineteen ninety-four, Mr. Mitchell First joined the college and has served in a number of capacities. In twenty-ten, he became the president, and he's still, uh, he remains our president. He stayed true to the college's core purpose, that we educate students for success. In early two thousand and thirteen, earlier this year, Mitchell purchased the property located at four-six-two-four through four-six-six-zero North Rancho Drive, the city of Las Vegas. Um, many of you very well may know that this property contains three shell buildings. The buildings and the property have been heavily vandalized, blighted, and in need, and in need of major improvements. Mitchell saw past this current state of the property and developed a vision that would include moving, that wanted to move our current school, which is located at Red Feather, to this future home of, uh, Nevada Career Institute. We feel that this would be a great addition for our campus. It would give a good campus feel to the school, as well as it would be a great addition to that area, that city of, that, that part of the city. We're requesting a parking various to begin our project and move Nevada Career Institute to his future permanent home. We're making this request based on a number of factors, including student class schedule, clinical externship rotations, and current student use of alternate means of transportation. Nevada Career Institute, the current population at Nevada Career Institute attends school at different times of the day. We have, we offer classes during morning, afternoon, and evening. This is very important that during, at any one of these session classes, n- not all the students are on campus at, uh, concurrently, some, together. Our current enrollment data shows that sixty-three percent students of current body, student population, attend during the day, morning, approximately twelve attend in the afternoon, and twenty-five percent in the evening sessions. Uh, one other very critical factor in this, uh, request is that almost all the programs that are currently offered at Nevada Career Institute have a clinical, or what we call an externship component associated with it, and what this means is that once this student reaches a certain point in their program, they leave the campus and continue with their education on an off-site location. As we speak, approximately seventy or so of our students, uh, that's, uh, approximately about thirty to forty percent of our student body are doing their clinical and externship rotation, and they are not on campus, and, and just as a side note, the medical assistant, medical office specialist program, the program in its entirety is approximately twenty percent off-site. Its externship, the surgical technology, and the practical nursing program are forty percent off-site. They are not conducted on campus. And finally, based on an informal survey, we've concluded and we've deduced that approximately twenty to twenty-five percent of Nevada Career Institute's current student population use some form of public transportation or alternate means of transportation. Based on these facts and our previous experience, we own and operate about seven, eight campuses in Southern California. We're confident that the current number of parking spaces a- available at Nevada Career Institute's future home will be more than enough to accommodate our student and staff. With that in mind, we are respectfully requesting a parking variance and are more than hopeful that our request is approved and the variance is granted. We do realize, we're well aware that in order for us to develop this property, it's gonna take a lot of money. We're willing to spend it. We just wanna have a future home and a very nice destination for City of Las Vegas and our students.
Thank you, sir. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Ma'am, come up and state your name and address, please.
Jean Weiner, ResCom LLC, forty-five-eight-eight North Rancho, Suite Twelve. I'm, uh, the property manager for, uh, Rancho Eight-eight-eight LLC. I'm with ResCom LLC, let me correct that. Um, and Rancho Eight-eight-eight LLC is one of the owners in the Rancho Pines Plaza, which sits adjacent to, um, your project, and we are south, just to the south, um, and we have a concern that due to the fact our parking right now is at a premium and we are not a hundred percent leased, our space, we still have vacant spaces and we're still at a parking premium. The overflow, the potential overflow of parking, um, is gonna end up i- on our project. Um, it's the only paved parking adjacent to, uh, to, to this gentleman's project, so, um, we're gonna ask that it be denied, and, um, uh, there was another point I wanted to make. Oh, um, the, the variance, i- it's not, our concern isn't necessarily what the intention of the school is now, but that variance stays with the property deed, as far as I understand it, so, down the road, years from now, if that property's expanded upon, w- we're stuck with the potential that there's overflow parking to our project. So, we're opposed.
Morton M. Weiner, ResCom LLC, forty-five-eight-eight North Rancho, Suite Twelve. The variance to Nevada Career Institute would cause an economic hardship to the Rancho Pine Center. As stated previously, parking is at a premium. We're not a hundred percent leased. If we were to get a hundred percent leased, if they were to build out their school, we'd have people parking up and down Rancho, so, we, of course, respectfully oppose the variance because it's going to damage our business as well.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Uh, actually, my name is Bob Muse, uh, re- with Rancho Eight-eight-eight LLC. I'm the owner, and, uh, very concerned about this. Uh, we're delighted to see the school come. We think that will help us. We've got an empty restaurant. We think, you know, the students would be great customers for it, but when we were told that there's about eighty or eighty-five less parking places than would be required, we've got a hundred and sixty-five. Eighty-five is more than half of a hundred and sixty-five. It scares the devil out of us that, you know, what's gonna happen to our parking? Are we gonna be constantly towing cars, and, uh, you have to post a sign, give them twenty-four hour notice? I mean, we've had this with other properties. So, I think, y- yeah, if they only use those three buildings, you're fine, but if we give them the right to do this, and let's say they outgrow the site ten years from now, and they sell it to an office developer who builds the ten buildings, and is allowed to build that out, that's gonna be a disaster. So, and, there's two large lots, each about two and a half acres to the immediate north of them. Uh, I was offered those. We didn't buy them because of setbacks and whatever. them because of setbacks and whatever. My thought was, gosh, that's a wonderful opportunity for the school. They could buy that cheap land, put plenty of parking, expand, and have future development so they don't have to move when they grow. So, I think it'd be a real hardship on us and the other, there are four property owners. We have about nineteen thousand five hundred feet. There's three five-thousand-foot offices. We all share the hundred and sixty-five foot space. That's four-point-seven per thousand, which is, for retail, is marginal. Four to five thousand would be normal. We have some medical office in there. We have one dental, which is usually higher. I think it's just, we're definitely opposed to this. I flew down from, I found out about this last Saturday, and I flew down here twice to talk the planning. I said, "What happens if they only build three buildings?" He said, "Well, they still have the right to build the ten buildings." And that's what we're worried about. I think that should be addressed whenever they want to redevelop the property. Right now, no, no variance. It's just going to be, it's a terrible precedent. And right behind them, there's a government office building. If you look at the aerial photo, it's full. There's no empty spaces in there. Their employees are full. So, where are they going to go? They've got to go to our property. And that's, that's just not right. So, minimum standards must have been set for some reason. Let's, let's stick to it.
Thank you, sir.
Harold Barling, sixty-one sixty-four Pine Villa Avenue. I commend these people for taking a, what's basically an eyesore, and proposing to upgrade it, spend a lot of money. And what they're asking for is a variation on parking. And if I, I believe the previous speakers didn't listen very carefully to the presentation, because the presentation indicated that, that three-hundred-and-eighty-five parking spaces would never be needed at any one time. So, I, I support this. I'd like to see a lot more development along this corridor, but on Rancho, I live where there's a, between Jones and Alexander, west side of Rancho, there is a major eyesore property that devalues our condominium complex next to it. And I'd just like to see that whole corridor developed. And I see this as a good start to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, come on up and give your name and address, please.
Justin Nardi, forty-five seventy-six North Rancho, representing Eugene Burger Management Company. We also would like to oppose this variance for parking, as our concern is that there will not be enough spaces for the existing businesses that are there in the event of overflow parking. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Jack Woodcock. I worked extensively with a group of people who are bringing this school to this site. This is a repurpose of a site that deserves some consideration. If you go to the school they currently operate, you'll see that there is more than adequate parking there. The students they bring to that site very seldom come in just one car, and many of them come in public transportation. This site has, this, this is just the kind of thing we want to see happen, when we have a site that has deteriorated to the state that it has. This will create jobs. This will create students that have a vocation, that can go out in the workplace. And I would hope that you would give them serious consideration in this request.
Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. I'm curious as how that little point came about on that south end there. That looks just like totally worthless space.
Thank you, sir. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. I'll go, Commissioner Goins. Okay. On this right here, I've looked at this pretty significantly. And I understand a lot of the adjacent property owners' concerns, because what I'm hearing from you, and the only thing I'm hearing from you, you're worried about spillover into your properties if there's not enough, if they get too many students. I don't know if that's going to become an issue here, based on the justification letter and the backup material and the things that I've been looking at. My understanding, there's about a hundred and seventy-five students enrolled in your school. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct, sir.
And my understanding is, obviously, that, you know, you've got rotating schedules. It's, you know, students aren't just there from eight to five, you know, the entire one-seventy-five. They're coming and going somewhat. Is that correct?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
And that's the way you intend to operate for the balance, I guess, as you fill out this, as you start moving into the other buildings? Is that my underst, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. For the last sixty-five years, we've been operating our career colleges in the, in the same method.
And there was one concern that was raised, that, you know, once we, if we approve this, that it runs with the land. And that's a fairly valid argument, with one exception, is the reason you have three hundred, what is it now, three-hundred-and-eighty-five staff, or three-eighty?
Yeah, the requirement, the requirement's three-eighty.
This project has been previously, this, this has been previously approved for an office, and because you now have three-eighty requirements, because you have a school. It's not, so, for example, if you were to close the school, and this would go back down to an office development, I believe the parking would most likely be in conformance with what, what's going on here. I'm going to support this for several reasons, the ones that I just outlined. Number two, I think it's a good addition to the area, to get those buildings opened up and, and being occupied. But I'm going to ask that there's a condition, that we do a one-year review, where these folks can come in. If your people are parking on that, you know, parking in their areas, we're going to look at pulling the variance.
Very fair.
So, that's one of the things that, you know, it may be difficult for us to do it, but that's one of the things that's going to happen. Do I have any other comments from the Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure you could actually pull the variance if the review came back negative, just based upon the fact that it's still going to be a school. So, you'd have to probably pull their ability to actually operate. I think it's still going to be a school, still require the same amount of parking. So, we may need to think about some other method to bring it back into compliance if that happens.
Can we put it up for a one-year review, where these adjacent property owners can come tell us whether there's issues here, and we can send code compliance out there?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of, there really, I'm not sure what he's going to do at that point. If, if in fact it becomes an issue with parking, is he going to be then required to get some satellite parking somewhere else? Or is there any adjacent parking that he could enter into an offsetted parking agreement with? Or, I mean, the review's a good idea, at least to show, you know, how well he's doing or how well he's not doing. But what do you do once the review comes back negative? That's going to be the thing.
Maybe if I might add to that conversation. Perhaps if there were to be a one-year review added, the direction might be that, should there prove to be problems, documented problems with parking on adjacent properties, that the operator of the school would need to find adjacent parking lots and enter into a parking agreement.
If we could do something like that, Mr. Chairman, that would be great.
Thank you. Any other discussion amongst the Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you. I think it's, this is the appropriate use. You've got these buildings, and from what I understand, you're the, this, well, the school's the, going to be the owner or tenant?
That's correct, sir. That's correct. I am the school.
Okay. Could we put a review, and just basically, if they have problems, then we could limit the development of the last building, the last pad?
That's good.
That way, if it's your, if you've created the hardship, then you're the only one that can fix it. And-
I guess we'll also have to do something to remedy the hardship from the lack of parking as well. So, I think with-
Take one building out, or one of, one of the buildings in the future phase, and you could be there.
I think through Chairman, Commissioner Truesdale, I think that condition that, that states, in case in a year we need additional parking, we're going to be required to provide satellite parking, I think that addresses your concern.
And/or not develop that. And/or not develop and occupy an appropriate amount, like one or, one or two of the buildings, because you're going to need that land for parking if, if you have a problem.
If we need to.
Can we count that as a motion, then, Commissioner Truesdale?
Yes, yes. I think that, I rely on staff to put that note.
And, Mr. Chairman, will you make sure the clerk has that condition, or at least-
Mr. Chairman, might I suggest something like this? A one-year required review, as a public hearing before the planning commission, shall be required upon issuance of a business license. In order to review parking, should there be an issue, applicants shall provide satellite parking as needed.
And/or, or will be restricted from going, occupying further buildings on that? I think that was Commissioner Truesdale.
Yeah, that, that's, I mean-
I, I just want to say, those other buildings are entitled, as we speak. The entitlement has been exercised by the building of the three buildings. Those entitlements exist today. So, the applicant would have to agree to surrender his entitlements.
Yeah, so your best bet would be satellite parking, then, at this point.
Okay. Is that your motion, Commissioner Truesdale?
Yes, I'll, I'll go along with that. And I suspect if you don't manage your problem, and these fine folks come back-
Absolutely.
You and the property owner are going to have more headaches than they know what to do with. But I, I do believe what you're proposing there is the appropriate. So, that is my motion.
Please vote. Please post. Motion to approve item fifty carries with the additional condition.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Moving on now to related items fifty-one and fifty-two. Item fifty-one is VAR five-one-nine-three-six. The applicant is Starbucks Coffee Company. The owner is TEG Charleston Decatur LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow, I believe, ten parking spaces, where a minimum twenty-eight spaces are required, at four-seven-one-seven West Charleston Boulevard in Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number fifty-two is SDR five-one-seven-eight-four, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed one-thousand-seven-hundred-fifty-square-foot restaurant with waivers to allow ten-foot landscape buffers along a portion of the north and west perimeters, where fifteen feet is required, a four-foot landscape buffer along the south perimeter, where eight feet is required, and to allow a building orientation to be away from the street corner, where such is required. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the city of Las Vegas required a fifteen-foot right-of-way dedication of this property in two thousand and seven along Decatur Boulevard. The dedication allowed for a right-turn lane for eastbound traffic on Charleston Boulevard. This dedication resulted in a site constraint that directly affected the ability of the project to meet Title Nineteen Perimeter Landscaping and Parking Standards, and as such, staff finds that this is not a self-imposed hardship, and is recommending approval of the request. Please note, we have received additional letters of support since publication.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
My name is Jonathan Spencer. My address, five-nine-seven-six South Bannock Street, Littleton, Colorado, eight-zero-one-two-zero. I'm here on behalf of the applicant of Starbucks Coffee Company. Starbucks would like, this is currently a vacant lot. It has been for some time, and Starbucks would like to relocate to the hard corner in order to take advantage of, of the location. Our site, as staff mentioned, has been constrained by the right-of-way dedication along Decatur to add the turning lane. And so, in order to provide as much parking as possible, as well as to accommodate the drive-through lane, we were required to move the building away from the corner, in order to make circulation, both traffic and pedestrian work, in a safe manner.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just, I'm going to abstain on this item, only because I believe one of the agents in my office is doing some work with the property owners, or one of the principals of the property owners. So, I, I think, funds of caution, I will abstain.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you. This is a welcomed addition to our ward and our neighborhood. And as the Commissioners can see, and the audience can see, how well landscaped and how beautiful they've encroached the area, the best, the best way they can, with the amount of space they have. Reason being for the parking shortages, this is a drive-through property versus a park-and-go-in, and as we all know, we like to drive-through. So, if, I've taken a very good look at this. I've looked at the plans. I've visited the site. And if nobody has anything else to say, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Regarding item number fifty-one, variance five-one-nine-three-six, I'd like to follow all of staff's recommendations for approval on this Starbucks location.
Please vote.
Again, reiterating that the lands-
One second, one second.
I'm sorry.
Motion to approve item number fifty-one carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Thank you, Mr. I mean, Commissioner. Regarding the number fifty-two, again, the landscape is the best that they can do for the space that they have. So, following all of staff's recommendations of SDR five-one-seven-eight-four, I'd like to follow the recommendations and gladly approve this item. Thank you.
Please vote. Please post. Motion to approve item fifty-two carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Mr. Chairman, items fifty-one and fifty-two go forward to City Council at the January twenty-second City Council meeting.
Thank you. Going on to item fifty-three is SUP five-one-six-nine-three. The applicant owner is Eastern Ninety-five LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed fifty-five-foot-tall, fourteen-foot-by-forty-eight-foot off-premise sign at four-hundred Northeastern Avenue in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed sign meets all minimum code requirements for an off-premise advertising sign. Staff finds that the use can be conducted in compatible and harmonious manner, manner, and recommends approval.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Laura Drea, five-twenty South Forest Street, here on behalf of Eastern Ninety-five LLC, who just purchased this property. As staff has noted, we fit all the parameters for a legal billboard and ask for your approval as well.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Commissioner Swamen?
I, I took a look at this. It, it's around the corner from my house, and it's right on the exit ramp off of Ninety-five, facing the freeway. And as staff states, it meets all Title Nineteen regulations. So, I don't know if anybody else has any comments. If not-
Go ahead and make your motion.
On item number fifty-three, SUP five-one-six-nine-three, I'd make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Please vote. Please post.
Approve.
Motion to approve item fifty-three carries?
Mr. Chairman, this item goes forward to the January twenty-second City Council meeting.
Going on now to related items fifty-four and fifty-five. Fifty-four is SUP five-one-seven-zero-three. The applicant is Rare Hospitality Management, Inc. The owner is Inland Diversified Las Vegas Centennial Center LLC. For possible action on a request for a special- For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed supper club at the southeast corner of Azure Drive and Centennial Center Boulevard in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Related item 55 is SDR 51704 for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 6,233 square foot restaurant with a waiver of the Town Center Development Standards to allow the restaurant to be located away from public rights-of-way. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposal is to demolish the existing building on the site to make way for the new 6,233 square foot building. That building will be set closer to the Centennial Center Boulevard than the current building, and staff is recommending approval of the waivers of the Town Center Development Standard as they are getting better. The proposed landscape will complement the existing perimeter landscaping, the adjacent commercial development, and provide a cohesive aesthetics for the area. Staff recommends approval of both the special use permit and the site plan review application.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. My name's Perry Holiday, Development Manager for Darden Restaurants, located at 1,000 Darden Center Drive, Orlando, Florida 32837. Darden Restaurants is the parent company of Longhorn. We also own several other concepts, including more commonly known Olive Garden, Red Lobster, Capital Grill, and Bahama Breeze. So, we have a pretty wide array of restaurants on our report. And I just want to mention that we appreciate staff's recommendations for approval. We review the conditions of approval and concur, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this?
Thank you, Todd Farlow. You know, I like this, but there's something wrong in planning. If we're tearing down buildings that are, what, 10, 15 years old and replacing them already? When you put up a building, you know, you need to get some sustainability out of the thing. And that's just...there's something just wrong with this. But again, I think it's a nice building, but it was here in the...
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard? Sir, come on up, state your name and address, please.
Harold Barling, 6164 Pineville Avenue. This applicant has been revealed that they do not let their employees have any sick leave. They...this is a restaurant. They force their employees to come to work sick or not keep their job. And to encourage this kind of a developer to develop another unit where that conditions apply is not acceptable to me.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm familiar with this restaurant. I've seen him in other markets. They run a good operation. It's a...it's an attractive building. It fits well on the site. I understand Mr. Farlow's concerns, but corporate branding is corporate branding. So, if they can do their building design and are willing to spend the dollars, it's good for our economy. I'll follow...if there's no question, I'll follow staff's recommendation for approval and make a motion.
Well, thank you. I think Commissioner Moody wants to be heard.
Oh, go ahead, Officer. Thank you.
Just one question for the applicant through the chair. Do I still get to throw my peanut shells on the floor? Is that this restaurant?
Unfortunately, not.
Oh. I don't know. It's going to be a tough vote then.
Typically, the peanut shells...
You might want to reconsider that.
Peanut shells are typically associated with a roadhouse, and we're considered more of a ranch house. But we'll gladly invite you over, and if you want to throw some peanut shells, we'll make an exception.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
All right. Motion is for...to follow staff's recommendation for approval on item 54, subject to all conditions.
Please post. Motion to approve item 54 carries?
Item 55, also to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to conditions.
Please post. Motion to approve item 55 carries?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, these items are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Going on now to item 56 is SUP 51776. The applicant is Dollar Loan Center. The owner is PKI Cheyenne Commons LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed auto title loan use within an existing financial institution specified with waivers to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a residential property where 200 feet is required, and to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a similar use where 1,000 feet is required at 3051 North Rainbow Boulevard in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, can we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, staff finds that the addition of the auto title loan is similar in nature and intensity to the existing financial institution specified, and therefore can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding land uses, and recommends approval.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Dave Galyon, Dollar Loan Center, 8860 West Sunset Road. Tonight, we're just hoping you do follow staff's recommendation of approval. We have currently been in this shopping center for close to 14 years. Again, as we've been in front of you 30 days ago, we're just looking to add additional services for our customers and do not feel it'll have any additional impact with the center.
Thank you, sir. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Moody?
I apologize. I didn't turn my mic off.
All right. Commissioner Goings?
No further questions. I'll move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of SUP 51776, subject to all staff's recommendation and condition.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion to approve item number 56 carries?
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good evening.
Mr. Chairman, this item goes forward to the January 22nd City Council meeting.
Thank you. Going on to item 57 is SUP 51794. The applicant is Felipe's Taco Number 2. The owner is Martinez 2008 Revocable Trust. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,800-square-foot beer/wine cooler on-sale establishment within an existing restaurant with a waiver to allow a 160-foot distance separation from a house of worship where 400 feet is required at 6450 West Lake Mead Boulevard, Suite 110, Councilman Barlow...excuse me, in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use does not meet all the conditions per Title 1912. As the applicant has requested a waiver to allow 160-foot distance separation from a protected use, a house of worship, where 400-foot distance separation is required. Staff cannot support the associated waiver request because the intent of Title 19 is to separate more intense commercial uses from protected uses, such as house of worships, and to protect public welfare. As this request proposes to decrease the separation between uses, the use is not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and staff recommends denial. Please note that additional letter of protest has been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
My name is Victor Martinez. I'm the owner of the property. And a few minutes ago, I was elected to speak for them.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. He needs his mic on.
You need to turn your mic on, sir.
There you go.
It's on now.
What is?
Yeah, you just got it on. I'm going to ask you to state your name and...
Victor Martinez. My address is 26495 Ascenic Drive, Carmel, California 93922. And I am the owner of the property. And I was elected to speak in front of you, so I'm not...wasn't totally prepared to speak for them. But there's a father and son in the mix, and the young lady from Cuba is also in the partnership. And they're very hard-working people trying to earn the American dream. They have full-time jobs just four blocks up on Main Street, and they put in seven days a week, very hard workers. Their food is not just what is listed, which is Felipe's Tacos. It's Mexican, also Cuban. And they do a very good job. They've been open about, I would say, five months, could be six. They started out with gangbusters, a lot of business, and the feedback that they were getting was that they still wanted to have the beer and wine. The customers said that. And they said they were in the process of applying, which has come due now. And the customers basically have slowly dropped off. They come back to see if he's got the license, and they're hanging in there, but I've had to reduce their rent half because I didn't want to lose them. And they're under a dollar a square foot for a beautiful restaurant like they have, which is unheard of. And I will also make a comment. I've got a letter from the city of Las Vegas, from the Planning Commission, that the distance between the church and my property has never changed. It's 160 feet. And I've got an approval for a business that he never totally went through City Council. So, the letter I didn't bring with me because I didn't know I was going to basically speak for you. So, when I saw that the denial was in place, and I wished I'd have brought the letter because before you, the Planning Commission states on my letter that the approval was...it was for a grocery store. But the distance between my property and their property has not changed since that approval was done a few years back. So, I would love to see the change on this for people that are really trying to earn the American dream.
Thank you, sir. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Goings?
I know this area very well. I can support the request. I know that it's common with restaurants to have that beer and wine in there. I don't have any problems with it. I just wanted to ask, is that your cart out in front of there?
Yeah.
What do you do with that cart?
They're trying to...
We sell head gobs upside.
Sir, you need to state...excuse me, SEC Commissioner. You need to state your name and address, please.
My name is Felipe Limón. It's 3,000 Vega Drive, Las Vegas 89106.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
I just wondered, is that...is there a special use permit permitted to have that cart out there?
I have a...I have a permit.
You have a permit and everything?
Yes, I do.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, the cart would require a business license and a review by the Planning Department. It is administrative review in order to be on location. And as of December 2nd, there is no permit or license for that cart to operate.
Did you hear that, sir?
Yes. I do have a license. I have the Health Department and everything.
You have a license? You have a business license?
Yes, I do.
And special use permit for the cart?
For the cart, yeah.
Is it with the city of Las Vegas?
City of Las Vegas.
Because staff...
I have a...in the same license, I have two places. I have the one indicator in Vega Drive, 1516. This is the number one. And that's the restaurant's number two. And I have the number three in Rancho in Vega Drive. The license is right there.
Okay. Well, city is saying that they do not have a record of that business license or special use permit for that cart at store number two.
He's walked to the city, paid that last, about three weeks ago, and then he made that. All the numbers are there.
I think what I would do is, if I were you, I would get with Mr. Rankin after this item and justify that, or you need to take care of that matter before you do that. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Moody?
Yeah, a comment. As I look through the backup materials, the very last document that we have is a public comment form from the Liberty Baptist Church located at 6501 West Lake Mead Boulevard. Comment, "We oppose SUP 51794," and their vote is against. I appreciate what you're doing here and the hard work that's going in, but my concern is the very establishment, the house of worship, that is protected by this SUP is against it. And on that basis, I...you're not going to have my support on this.
Thank you. Commissioner Goings?
I'm ready to make a motion for approval of SUP 51794, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions. But I do want the applicant to also do not use that cart until it's properly licensed and with a business license out there.
Please post. Motion to approve carries?
Mr. Chairman, this item goes forward to the January 22nd City Council meeting.
Will now do director's business. Item number 58 is TXT 51100, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas. For possible action to readopt the Town Center Development Standards to include various clarifications and updated code references related to changes made to LVMC Title 19 with the adoption of the Unified Development Code. Staff is recommending approval. And staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this proposed amendment will update the Town Center Development Standard Manual to reflect changes and corrections referenced to...to properly mirror the Unified Development Code. The proposed amendment will also eliminate standards and listings for the Employment Center Mixed Use Town Center Land Use designation since this land use category has been effectively eliminated by a series of planned community modifications over the years. As part of addressing the elimination of the Employment Center Mixed Use Town Center, the proposed amendment removes several light industrial-type uses from the list of permitted uses, which were only appropriate and applicable to the employment center. Those uses which were limited were heavy machinery and equipment rentals, light assembly and manuf...fabrication, thrift store, and towing and impound yard. Further, the proposed amendment will clarify certain standards and legitimize others that have been found to be part of the published version of the manual but have not been officially adopted by City Council. Staff does recommend approval of this update to the Town Center Development Standards Manual.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter?
Yes. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. And I am terribly disappointed with what Town Center was supposed to be and what it turned out to be.
Thank you, sir. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Moody?
If there's no discussion, I'm ready to make a motion. Motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval on item 58.
Please post. Motion to approve item 58 carries?
Mr. Chairman, this item will go forward to City Council in ordinance format.
Item 59, TXT 51291, the applicant owner, city of Las Vegas. For discussion and possible action to amend LV... action to amend LVMC Chapter 19.12 regarding the short-term residential rental use and regulations to require a special use permit for the use in residential zoning districts and to provide for other related matters. Staff is recommending approval, and staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, at a recommending committee where Bill 201351 was being heard by that subcommittee of City Council, there were concerns by that committee that the bill was not adequate to address short-term residential rentals. Ashut staff was directed to come back and make changes to that bill, and that is the result of the item before you today. In regards to Title 19, the amendment would change the short-term residential rental use from a conditional use to one requiring a special use permit for residential dwellings over four bedrooms in size. The conditions that were designated to remain in Title 19 for the use under this text amendment will now be minimum special use permit requirements for any location which can't meet the conditional use requirements. The amendment further proposes to add conditional use regulations and minimal special use requirements as follows. It would add a condition that any, once again, any, any short-term rental over four bedrooms would require an SUP. The maximum occupancy limits could be set by the means of a special use permit if it were to accommodate more than 12 overnight or 18-day occupants. It also adds a requirement which allows for civil penalties to be imposed on properties, not a compliance to the zoning code. Also, there is a section that adds of the ordinance, which is not part of this text amendment, but of the ordinance being presented to City Council, to Title IX, which would allow Metro to enforce certain provisions of the short-term rental, and that would be under the Loud and Unruly Gathering section of Title IX to address health safety concerns. If you have any questions, we will try and do our best to answer them regarding short-term rentals.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street, and I certainly do. I was at the recommending meetings on this, and there was abominations in one of our better neighborhoods, and I do never want to see that happen again. Second of all, Metro does not have the force. I go to the fiscal affairs meeting, they do not have the force to respond to these. We have no code enforcement that can respond to them because we cut back on the thing to that. But so, until we have the enforcement mechanism in place, until we have the staff that can support this, that completes these, then I think that this, this should be tabled. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. State your name and address, please.
My name is Dr. Anthony Summer, 2324 Sunrise Meadows Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada. And I actually have been involved in the, this issue since the City Council hearing in October, and have actually met with the Business Licensing Department, met with Karen Duddleston, discussed this matter extensively with her and her team of excellent staff. And I think it's important to understand how this issue began. It began with some unscrupulous property owners who purchased large homes in the City of Las Vegas and set up and advertised to have large parties at these homes in the middle of residential neighborhoods. And these parties, of course, caused great disruption to the community and led to citizens who lived in that neighborhood complaining to the City of Las Vegas. In order to, and the owners of these properties do, really don't care about what they're doing. They basically say, "Just try and stop me because I'm making a lot of money and setting up these parties." It's kind of the principle of the movie series that's been popularized recently. What's the name of the movie? Hangover, the Hangover series. And so people from all over the country are invited to a house in the middle of the city and go crazy. And I'm certainly strongly against that. On the other hand, there are very decent rental property owners in the city, such as myself, who own multiple properties and follow all the laws and city and state rules. And we accommodate families that visit loved ones in Las Vegas. They come here for sick elderly people, and they may need to stay in town for less than 31 days. Some of these people are fathers who are in divorce situations. They need to visit their children for a week or two by court order, and that's a less-than-31-day period. They don't want to spend time in a hotel with their kid who has a, not able to see the pet. They would rather have a home where they can really bond with their children. So it's a very complex situation, but the real goal is to shut down the party houses. And the answer, I actually agree with this gentleman here in part, which is that we need enforcement. We need to empower Metro to be able to shut down the party houses. And I, my wife and I researched this extensively and found that there is a very effective ordinance in the City of Newport Beach, California. It's called the Loud and Unruly Gathering Ordinance, which has succeeded in shutting down party houses just like this and gives Metro the power to come out and actually disband the parties if reports are reported to the sergeant in charge at the time. The problem here is if we, if we let the city send out their code enforcement, they're not really available on Friday and Saturday nights when these parties occur, whereas Metro is on call and ready for action. So I think that is the key to shutting down party houses. Now, this ordinance proposes that homes that are five bedrooms or more have to be subjected to a special use permit. And that has a double-edged sword. There are many homes that are five bedrooms or more that follow all the rules and do the right things, and some of those people are actually here tonight. On the other hand, the home that has caused the biggest problem is a five-bedroom home, and you'll hear about that from the neighbors of that home. And so that's why this arbitrary cutoff point of five bedrooms has been set up in this ordinance. I would only support that if it were backed up by a Loud and Unruly Gathering Ordinance that is strongly, that strongly empowers Metro Police to act when necessary and disband the parties when necessary and put a notice on the property for 90 days saying they've been categorized as a party house.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sir, if you could state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Jewel Dixon, and I live at 612 Campbell. We have had a party house next door to us since about June of 2011. And during that period of time, it's probably been rented about 15 days a week by different parties, all kinds of weddings, disc jockeys. Funny trucks come in, park there for some of the Speedway events. We've had no peace and quiet in our backyard since this thing happened. And this guy bought this thing at a foreclosure sale for $600,000 from the Bank of Nevada, and he proceeded immediately to convert it into a party house, and we've lived with it every cent. The proposed ordinance will help, but I am not sure it will put the party houses out of business. People always find loopholes. People find ways to get around the law. We've had the police out numerous times over this period of time, quelling down noise, disorderly, all kinds of activities that are going on. And I'm concerned that if you grant a permit for a, an exception, a special permit, which I believe this ordinance is authorizing, these people will be back doing the same thing again. And I, as a neighbor, I'm going to be having to put up with it for another couple of years until we can get some action going again. So what it all boils down to is, why should I, if these people are put in for a party house, as I understand it, are put in for a special exemption, then if nobody opposes it, they get it. And as the next-door neighbor, I have to go out and try to organize the neighborhood to keep them from getting this. And here, they've been violating the law for two years. And enforcement is still questionable, and I'd just like to add that Robert Rubin, who couldn't be here tonight, my across-the-street neighbor, agrees with what I'm talking to you about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, if you'll state your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is Karen Summer, 2324 Sunrise Meadows Drive. And basically, the point to keep in mind is that we need to shut down the party houses. And if the special use permit is the way to do it, then at least targeting the larger homes is the way to go, but still keep in mind that not all large homes are going to be used for party houses. So what you really need is enforcement. And I know that's not the Planning Commission's jurisdiction, but we have been talking to the police department, and they don't have an ordinance right now that they can really enforce to shut these places down. So after this step is approved, there's still a lot more work that has to be done with the drafting of the Loud and Unruly Gathering Ordinance, and then also the specific requirements to get the business license for these various permits. But at least taking the smaller homes out of the equation and just keeping them with the conditional permit really makes sense, and I appreciate that the amendment does take that into consideration because people don't rent two- or three-bedroom homes to have parties. They rent the larger homes. So this will take care of that. So like I said, enforcement is the biggest problem, but it does only mention $500 for the first offense, $1,000 for the second offense, and then it doesn't say what happens after that. So I hope that there's a provision somewhere, some law that's related to this, where if they keep doing it, the fines or, they either get more strict, more expensive, or the permit does get taken away. Because of the house in question on Campbell, we already know that they're in violation, so they shouldn't even get a permit. But if for some reason they do, once it's down on record that they've committed one, two, three, four offenses, hopefully that permit can be revoked. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members, go ahead, ma'am, state your name and address, please?
Patricia M. Flick, known by Pat Flick. Flick, Eppes and Frank, L.I.C.K. I live at 612 Campbell Drive, next to the party house, which is 616 Campbell Drive. Nigel Burton bought this house back in April 2011 in a foreclosure, $600,000. He did a marvelous job with it the first month, painted it, looks beautiful. I'm very familiar with the house because it was built by the same contractor, the same year as ours, 1990. The problem is about two months later, around June, it started a lot of activity over there. Activity meaning we've had convention people bit there. In fact, they broke my security gate out in front. We've had people from the Speedway. We have taxi cabs and limousines coming up all hours of the night with lovely girls coming out, especially the bachelors who are there. This house rents for $1,200 a night. Their first website, and I think this is way before the city got involved because I addressed it with our councilwoman, Tarkanian, in our area, in our local little groups in our area. But they advertised it sleeping 28 people, 10 bedrooms, 10 baths. The county says it has five bedrooms, six baths. We're, as I said, well familiar with that house because it's just like ours. So of course, you're going to have parties there. And those parties go on and on. Yes, Crystal Properties and Investments LLC, ran by the manager, Pete Anello. I've met him many times. We've had walkarounds at my house, his house. We've discussed matters. I've called him in the middle of the night. In fact, the last time I called him was just before Thanksgiving because we went to California. And I called him at 10:30 at night. I says, "You've got to do something about this house. We've got young kids in groups of five to 12 walking up to the front door. They're walking over from Palomino, up and down. They're walking up from Pinto. They're not driving. Besides that, we have cars that are dropping off these young kids, and people are picking them up, the other young kids. And here they are in front of my gate, and I can hear them on their cell phones. Hey, there's lots of girls over there, come on up." So we have this activity. 10:30 at night, Pete says, "Okay, I'll call them." 11:30 at night, somebody calls 311. Cops get there later, 20 minutes. And I understand the neighbor that talked to him said, "It's a birthday party." They have a pool out in the back. They bathe nude. I can see everything from my side, except not all of the pool, but there's lights, it's heated, it's utilized. So do you want this in your neighborhood? Would you live next to a party house? I have, at the results of talking to the city, I have kept notes, I have albums, two-and-a-half years, which were produced at the recommending committee. They did take time to look at them. I gave them printouts, which shows the party house, all the lovely, beautiful pictures, how much it is, and then with it, I included the county records. So it's in contradiction. Now they've calmed it down. I think they advertise instead of 28, it'll sleep 12. They still advertise large bedrooms, but it isn't. It isn't what they say it is, but it is a party house. And it goes on constantly, and darn it, I want something results. And you've heard the word enforcement. Who's going to enforce it? You know who's enforcing it? Pat Flick, the neighbor. So with all your changes, what are they going to do? They're going to make Pat Flick the enforcer and my neighbors because I have to go around. You think they're going to post it? This guy is probably a billionaire. He goes to China, he goes all over Europe. I've heard all kinds of stories from Pete Anello, who is the manager for Crystal Properties and Investments LLC. He's greedy. They're greedy. What else is it about? This is a beautiful neighborhood between Pinto and Palomino, Arabian, right across the street.
Thank you, ma'am. And do you mind giving the clerk the papers you just mentioned?
Oh.
We can put those into the record.
They are, and I think they're on the website, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, if you'll state your name and address, please?
Annette Fiala, 208 East Levi Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89183. I'm here just to, I agree and I support a stricter ordinance, and the gentleman that Pat, Patricia's talking about, his name's Peter Anello, he is a licensed real estate broker and also a licensed real estate property manager. And when the City of Las Vegas approved the ordinance in March of 2008, he took that, that just gave him a free rein to, he, he takes his list of high-end properties going into foreclosure. He approaches the owners and he tells them, "You're going to lose your property. I'm willing to give you $3,000 to $5,000 a month. You move out and just let me rent the property out until it goes into foreclosure and the bank gets it." So this guy banks buck every month. And like they said, you know, he, he has, he's just a manager, and he has a ton of money. And he is giving all the short-term rental houses in the whole county and the city a bad name, and it's just one person. And he is on code enforcement's radar in the city and the county. And I represent a group of people, there's about 70 of us, that own some short-term rental houses in the city and the county. And we have proposed, we've met with Karen Duddleston, and we've proposed a party house ban ordinance, a special use permit. Karen has met everyone, a lot of people in the city have met with, the council, the council members have met Peter to meet with him. He says, "Oh, I hate party houses. I'm against them." You know, when you meet the guy, he appears really nice, you cannot get him, you can't get under his skin. And if, if the way to go about it was get houses, license them with a special use permit, he would get a ton of special use permits for his houses, and it would be harder to shut them down. We're proposing a party house ban ordinance with the, like the City of Newport Beach has, where the, you know, the... where the, you know, the police have the authority to go in, and it's not an issue where they're, you call code enforcement Friday night and Saturday night, and they show up on Monday. And we also, we're proposing stricter fines, you know, 500, 1,000, 1,500, 2,000, you're out of business, you know. And so we did give Karen that proposal, and we're going to meet again with her to go over that. And I believe that that's the way to go. Another issue with the larger houses, the five bedrooms or more, there's a lot of, the city of Las Vegas and the county, they attract the sports teams for their conventions here, you know, and their competitions. And the sports teams are not, they don't consist of two kids or three kids. These are volleyball teams, soccer teams, baseball teams, basketball teams. And those parents want to get their children in a five-bedroom or 10-bedroom house, you know, and they, they would like to rent three five-bedroom houses in the same neighborhood. So all these little dynamics come together to, it's a double-edged sword, like was previously stated. You know, if you require the special use permit, and in the city of Las Vegas, there's a thousand-foot requirement, you're not going to, nobody's going to want to approve that. And Councilman Barlow says, "We're in business to keep you in business." The council members all recognize there's a huge need for the, for the short-term rental house, for the adoption, for the conventioners that come in. There's conventioners that have been coming to town for 30 years. They are tired of the hotels, and they want to live in a, they want to stay in a property like their own. They would like a luxury home sometimes, or they want the peace and quiet. They want to be able to go to a barbecue. They want a pool that is not, they don't have to worry about the cleanliness of it. And so all this is offered by the short-term rental house. So there's an absolute need for alternative housing to the hotel. But if a special use permit is required, you guys know what that's like going through it, and in the city of Las Vegas, it's a thousand-foot requirement. So to ask your neighbors, like Patricia said, "Do you want this next to you?" Well, just because it's a short-term rental house, every short-term rental house is not a party house, okay? A party house could be a short-term rental house, but that's why in the county, we're dealing with an issue. And some of us, one of our guys went home, and he went on his computer on Facebook, and some, a young kid on there said, "Hey, check this out. I just rented this house. It's a mansion in Las Vegas, and it's actually in the city. I signed a one-year lease, and for this, like $500 a month membership, you're going to, you park your car here, and we pick you up, and we drive you over to this house, and we're going to party three times a month." Okay? And that's a long-term lease, okay? So a special use permit is not going to stop the party houses. A party house ban ordinance is what we propose is going to stop the party houses. You know, you get your first chance, second chance, third chance, you're out of the ballpark. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it for discussion amongst the commissioners. Who's first? Commissioner Truesdale?
I, I don't understand this at all. I, I think there should be an absolute ban on it, whether it affects some miscellaneous businesses. There's communities all over Southern California that ban short-term rentals. And they're rental communities, they, they extend it to a period of time. We should not have people running those kind of businesses in our neighborhoods. It's, and any way you try to make it sound good, it's appalling. I, I feel for these, these couple that, or the people that live next door to this existing one, but there's others in, in that general area of town. And putting everybody through a special use process, I don't think gets us there. There's, I, there should be a ban on the party houses, and $1,000, if the guy's making $1,200 a night, $1,000 fine isn't going to, I mean, he'll spend that hiring the attorney in five minutes, not to disparage the attorneys here. But we shouldn't have party house rentals in residential neighborhoods. To me, it's criminal.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to echo what Commissioner Truesdale's saying on this. I find it appalling that a neighbor has to deal with that type of issue in your own residence, especially if you've been living there for a long time. I can't think of anything more frustrating than trying to enjoy the quiet, peaceful solidity of your own home, and having to hear that stuff going on till 2, 3:00 in the morning. I know what happens with these party houses, too. You get a bunch of kids showing up, no respect for the yards, no respect for property, no respect for a lot of the people living in the neighborhoods. I think we just got to craft something to figure out how to deal with this issue. I think this, this ordinance is just a Band-Aid on a gushing wound.
Yes, Chairman, I'm a little confused as well, because I wouldn't agree that the party houses would be appropriate in the neighborhoods. However, if we, if we don't push this forward, then basically the existing ordinance would stay into effect, which would end up having, you know, less protection for these individuals. And so I think a short-term rental, there, there's a need for it, for individuals moving to town, trying to find a house and residence. But maybe it could be brought to another level, where we restrict those homes from having more than four residents, or five residents, or whatever, and not allowing 10 residents to be within one of these houses. So I, I just see if, I mean, maybe we need to take a look at this, hold it in abeyance one more, one more month, and see if all of us can scratch our heads and put additional wording into this, if we want it to have more of a claw. But just, I think if we just make a motion to deny this, it doesn't help anyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Quinn?
Yeah, I just want to say, I, I live in your neighborhood. I'm at Rancho Alta, and I, and I know loud and clearly exactly what you're going through, and it's happened directly behind me in a house in Rancho Circle. But I, but I, this is how I feel. I think a special use permit is a Band-Aid. I think it's time to get a councilperson. I think it's time to get a county commissioner. I think it's time to make it an ordinance where it's passed both in the city and the county, that there just is not any. And if we hold it tonight, and, because you need a councilperson, and you need a county commissioner to come together and make it a law for the entire community. We can't just, you know, do it here and them not do it there. Am I correct, Mr., Mr. Scott, am I correct in saying that, Mr. City Attorney?
That's correct.
To do an ordinance, you need. And so if we do the SUP tonight, that might be a nice Band-Aid for a few months, but you cannot, you can't stop here. We have to make it a direct ordinance, which is a law. It's a lot of work. A county commissioner represents it, a city councilperson represents it, and we shut them down. And that's my opinion. And I'm sorry, because I know what you're going through. I know what house you're talking about. And it's happening in Commissioner Truesdale's daughter's neighborhood, and it's happening in my neighborhood, so I understand it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Boner?
Just, just kind of a repetition, but I served on the county planning commission previously, and they had the problem back then, and it's been quite a number of years ago that I served there. So it's time, it's past time to do something significant about this. I do think it ought to be both jurisdictions joining together and making a very common ordinance that would suffice both, which Metro covers both anyway. So let's do it jointly.
Thank you, Commissioner. Director?
Let me offer just some additional guidance, if I could, and some background on where we've been with this ordinance. As you recall, this first came to Planning Commission quite a while back, and was then forwarded to the city council in ordinance format, where it went to recommending committee several times. City council debated whether they should outright ban short-term residential rentals, or if they should adopt additional restrictions. And so they did consider an outright ban. One of the things to take into consideration, when you do ban the use, it shifts the enforcement abilities. What is proposed under the ordinance that you have before you shifts a lot of the burden of compliance issues onto the business licensing compliance section. If you ban short-term rentals, then it shifts it back to code enforcement. And we've already heard the issues with having code enforcement really be the, the police of, of this ordinance. So trust me, city council has also struggled with this issue about where they should go. The ultimate direction that they gave at recommending committee is that they wanted an ordinance with additional enforcement abilities. You are seeing just part of that tonight, because again, as you're aware, Planning Commission only has purview over Title 19, which is the zoning code, which deals with the land use issues. There are two companion pieces that will accompany this, if this goes forward to city council. Number one is the additional restrictions that have been added to Title 6, which is the business licensing code, which does include additional civil penalties for violators of the business licensing section of the ordinance. And then, as also was mentioned, there is an amendment to Title 9 that's proposed, which is the large and unruly gathering portion of the ordinance. So not only do you have a proposal to Title 19, which is land use, you also have proposals set to go forward, which are additional restrictions in Title 6 and Title 9 of the municipal code. City council would like this item to come forward to them, so that they can again discuss this at recommending committee. So depending on how the Planning Commission feels about this, what I would ask that you do is, if you send it forward, either with a recommendation of approval, as it stands, or with a recommendation of denial, rather than holding the item in abeyance, is what I would request.
Thank you, Director. Mr. Chairman?
You know, moving it forward, not moving it forward, as a land use element, if we're focused on land use, we approve residential neighborhoods for residents. And residents are typically in this, considered longer than a 30-day period. They, they sign leases, they're there. We, when we approve a residential development, we don't say, "Well, geez, 10% of these houses could wind up being party houses." We wouldn't approve these things, as a land, as a matter of land use. As soon as you talk about trying to figure out how to license them, you're saying it's okay. It's, as soon as you figure out how to, if code enforcement or business license is supposed to oversee them, they're all departments of the city. We're, we're one city. We've got one city manager, we've got a council. If nobody wants to solve the problem, then just let it go the way it is. But if everybody wants to solve this problem, just show some backbone and say no to these problems in our neighborhoods. Young kids at these party houses, how many people have been shot at a, at a neighborhood party? You know, Metro goes, "It's an outrage." Well, stop these things before they, they get there. This ordinance isn't going to do anything. We're just, we're finding a way to license it, and once we license it, we just turn over to the attorneys to see who they can, how they can sue the city over this one, it wasn't enforced properly, we didn't get the right date. If you just say no to it, we, and create that as a policy for the city. From a land use concern, I don't approve, I don't vote for any residential developments and say, "Hey, let's put commercial uses in it. Let them, let them put a nude pool, let them put a cat house." This is ridiculous that, that this even goes on. And I'm surprised the house on Campbell hasn't been stopped. I mean, the things that go on there, if they don't violate half the laws in our community, they've got to violate the other half. So I, I don't see how, just pushing this on and saying, "Here, you've got an ordinance, now work it out again," it's already been to recommending. But I just, I'm here for a land use decision, a recommendation, and I think we should throw this out and get a backbone and start over.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners want to be heard? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Maybe, I was just suggesting to the director, maybe if you want to send that message to the city council, maybe you say that you want to amend the language of this particular ordinance to say, "There shall be no 30-day rentals, under any circumstances." You know, that there shall be no party houses. And that's the language you set up to council. They'll still have this particular language to look at, as well as your recommendation to say, "There shall be none."
But as a recommendation to city council, if we go, "What's before us," make, we don't, it makes sense. We're not in a, we're not in a position to rewrite this thing from the ground up. Why don't we say, "Let's hold it until..." And that sends, that sends the same message. This isn't acceptable the way it is, at least as, as I see it from a, from the land use perspective. It may be acceptable under business license or some other, but as a land use, we should just cut the arm off here and let it go.
And that's what I'm saying, Commissioner. If you're saying that there shall be none, and you're saying that this particular scheme, where they're actually licensing it, or SUP-ing it, doesn't work, why don't you just say that you'd rather see the language saying, "There shall be none at all." No licensing, no SUP, there shall be none, they're completely banned.
And we would do that with a vote of denial, with the recommendation?
Right, with the recommendation to say that there shall be no party houses, under any circumstance, or there shall be no short-term rentals.
And let me also add that if you hold this item in abeyance, all you're doing is prolonging the problem. That the people who've testified here tonight have to wait two, three, four additional months to have any type of resolution to this. So again, a recommendation in terms of how land use should be conducted is what city council is looking for.
Is it possible?
And if we, if we push this forward, as a land use, these people for the next six months to a year are going to be back here fighting SUPs. Because as soon as it's adopted, then, then this, this fool that has his house is going to go file an SUP, whether he gets it or not, they're going to be dragged through the mill on this thing.
And Commissioner, I'm saying, I'm saying not approve it with the SUPs, just say that you, as a, as a planning commission, prefer the language to say, "There shall be no 30, short-term rentals. There shall be no SUPs. There shall be no licenses. There shall be none at all."
What I'm hearing in this discussion is, if we put it on hold, we're just going to be sitting in limbo. If we vote on it, action it with a denial, and then with the message that we don't even want these things, at least this is forcing action on it.
May I ask a question, Director? Is it, or City Attorney, is it possible to say that we're willing to pass this as an SUP, with the condition that the city council mandates or writes an ordinance that is such that, that puts into law, there will be none? So at least they have a little leeway for some type of back, for something, and then an ordinance is going to be written coming to follow up the SUP, which would be none at all?
I think this needs to be the ordinance that says that. I mean, because I think in the past, when you've considered ordinances that go on to city council, you've actually amended language within that particular ordinance that's up for consideration. And they've taken that into consideration. So in this instance, you basically strike all the language that's currently here, and say, "There shall be no short-term 30-day rentals."
And an ordinance should be?
Right, and then an ordinance would reflect that. I mean, Flynn's department would actually write up an ordinance indicating, or with the help of our office, would indicate that there shall be no short-term rentals.
Okay.
Period. And there, that, that means this issue about the SUPs, the issue about licensing, all that stuff goes away. There shall be none.
But through you, Mr. Chair, if you do that, then what happens to the people that are, that, that are, that have the short-term rentals, that are doing it properly? Does that, doesn't that penalize those that are doing the right thing as well?
Yeah, I mean, it would go across the board. I mean, there would be no short-term rentals. They would have to enter into long-term leases.
Wow.
And like I said, I mean, I'm making it more, a little bit more simple than it is, but I mean, we would come up with the exact language, I mean, indicating it, but it would basically say, "There are to be no short-term rentals."
Yeah, but it's almost like you have one person that, that's causing the problem, but then it affects the, you know, you got one person that's going to cause the, the other people that are doing the right thing are going to be punished for the guy that's doing the wrong thing. And nine times out of 10, the one that's doing the wrong thing, even though you, he's going to continue doing what he's doing, you just got to catch him. The issue's not the short-term rental, the issue is the party house. And so, I mean, whatever's crafted is somehow got to focus on that.
And as lawyers, we do, you know, we have to be more specific in terms of what that term means.
Yes.
I mean, a party house could be anything, from a 1,200-square-foot house, to a condo, to whatever, if a party's occurring at that particular house. So when we're drafting these ordinances, we have to be very careful, just like the Lordy ordinances, where you can't really, we can't seem to clearly define that, where it's been constitutionally held to be, to be okay. But we need to kind of be careful as to what we define as a party house, and how we're defining that, what we're looking at. So, I mean, if, if the job of this, of this commission is to at least send a recommendation forward to city council, you need to send the strongest message you can, or at least the language that you'd like to see within the ordinance they're going to be considering. And if that language is, "There shall be none," I would recommend that you put that language in there, strike all the rest of the, the language. It'll go up to city council, they'll look at your recommendation to say, "There shall be none." They'll look at the ordinance that was drafted by the planning department, and they'll just deter, make a determination as to which one they want to choose.
I, I guess there's a, is something I learned in watching the county planning years ago. And, correct me if I'm wrong, I think state law says, in, in city ordinance, if we table something, it doesn't go beyond here unless the city, the city council wants to say, "Planning commission isn't done their job, and it's a show cause issue for this commission." And they can, they can make it as painful on the planning commissions as they would like, and they can bring it forward, and they can decide it. Somehow, I think in the bottom of my heart, that, that, what is a greater saying, "We think this is inappropriate." And, but I, I do realize what you're saying. I mean, and I, but I, if we're going to say, we don't, we pass something that says, "We don't think party houses belong in a residential environment," or, or short-term rentals, we don't, it's not party house, because anybody can party wherever they want. It has to have other, it's not like an, a motion, we, we need to say why we don't agree, right?
Why you don't agree with this particular ordinance?
Or no, why we want, we would recommend an absolute ban on short-term rentals.
I mean, I think they've done it, I think they, normally in the, the immediate, for the beginning of all ordinances, they kind of detail exactly what the rationale is of the governing body as to why they're creating a particular rule. And I think, and I don't know if it's in this one or not, I'm just seeing a little portion of it here on my screen, but I'm assuming that the beginning of this particular ordinance does say, "In order to regulate the, you know, or to eliminate noise within neighborhoods and to keep businesses outside, you know, to, for the betterment of the city, blah, blah, blah," I'm sure it goes through a, a series of rationale as to why we're doing it. So like I said, we're not rewriting the ordinance at this point, you know, at this meeting, we're just simply having the, the planning commission come up with some recommendation for the council. If you're not in agreement with the language as written, you can make changes to that language. If there's something that you'd like to, to see added, you can add things to it. But if you just completely disagree with the policy completely, that "There shall be no short-term rentals," you can make that statement to the council as well. And it's going to be ultimately their decision to either accept or reject your, your recommendation.
And find a way to enforce it.
And find a way to enforce it. Yes, you can hold it, yes, you can approve it, yes, you can deny it. But as the chairman, as the Director said, it's kind of, you know, an ordinance has to come at some point.
Mr. Chair, if I can, I think I'm the only one that hasn't weighed in on this. I guess what I would like to see is an up or down vote tonight. I would rather vote for or against and send it on rather than hold.
Chairman. Go ahead, Commissioner Slottman.
I'll, I'll try to make a craft a motion here, and we'll just throw it out and see where it goes. Although I don't agree with the ordinance, I don't think table on it is going to help this situation out. Even though I don't think this has everything in it that it needs, I think it's a lot better than the existing ordinance. So I would be willing to make a motion to follow staff's recommendation on item number 59, abeyance TXT 51291, with the recommendation that city council continues to look at the requirements to help alleviate the party houses, not allowing, not allowing five or 10 people, or 10, eight to 10 people living in one of these homes. I think the short-term rentals actually does serve a valuable purpose, so I don't think doing away with all short-term rentals is the solution here. So I would recommend that city council tries to take a stab at reducing the number of occupants allowed in these short-term rentals. That's my motion.
So your motion is that the city council look at this, but it has nothing to, with regard to the, of the ordinance in front of us. You just want them to take a look at something else, but we're not going to weigh in on that?
Yes, I, I basically said, my motion was to approve that, the ordinance that we've seen today with putting in the fines and, and the other components. But I would like, I would like to make a recommendation on top of that.
The, Commissioner, before you go that way, can we go back to, take the vote off for a second and go back to the backup material? Commissioners, if you go to the backup material where it says, "Bill 2013-51, proposed first amendment," this is part of the, this is part of the package, and I would direct your attention to two parts. Okay, page one defines daytime and nighttime. It's in red on our things. Daytime means a period of time between 9:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. on a given day. Nighttime means a period of time between 10:00 p.m. on one day and 9:00 a.m. on the next succeeding day. And if you scroll down in this, and you go to page five, there's a chart listed, and it's putting now a maximum number of people who can be in the place at any given time. So for example, if you've got five bedrooms, the maximum number of people that can be on the property at nighttime is defined as 12 people. The number of additional daytime occupants is six, so the maximum number of daytime occupants is 18. On a four-bedroom house, the maximum is 10 for night, a day can have additional five for 15. I think we're getting close with this because, one, I think you still have to have the ability to have a short-term rental, because, you know, it's, some of the situations that have been discussed is when somebody's coming here, they may have a sick relative or something, and they need to be here for a while, or, and, and if we were to preclude that, that harms those people. So the question becomes focusing on the party house, and I think if you, if you look at this package here, I think we're getting there. Now, I just wanted to point that out before a motion is made. In any event, I'll pass, and if, Commissioner Slottman, if you want to continue, you're welcome to.
Well, I think that's where the meat of getting rid of the party houses is located, what you just showed us. If we still want the 30-day rentals, which serve a valuable purpose, then we restrict it, we don't allow 12 people in a house, or 10 in a four-bedroom, or, I mean, if it's a four, four-bedroom, we allow four.
This, that chart that I just read you goes from zero to five bedrooms.
Absolutely. But we can, we could look at making a recommendation for reducing the number of occupants based on that. Because if you have a five-bedroom house, and it's a, and you have 12 occupants, it's a party house. I mean, there's very few families with 12 individuals that they need to move into a short-term rental. So if we chop that top part off, the, or the three bedrooms at eight people, four bedrooms at 10, five at, at 12, and we just say the maximum number of occupants in a house on a short-term rental should be four.
Well, let's go ahead and make a motion here on this.
What, what happens if there's 12 rooms in the house? There's several homes in the core of this city that have 12 rooms in them. Well, what, where does this chart go? Does that just, that get off the chart and we just say, "Let them ride"?
I think, I think at this point, now we're rewriting the entire ordinance, so I mean, we're not really, you know, I mean, I would say, if you're going to...
I mean, this is a reality.
Yeah, I know.
Around UMC, there are several homes that are, have 12 or greater rooms, bedrooms plus large commercial kitchens. Those, and they're utilized primarily for corporate parties. I mean, which is what, if someone has to rent a place for a month, and if it's 1,200 a night, they can, if they're going to spend 24 grand, let them spend 24 grand to try and break the law. If, if they want to, for two days or three days of parties, but we're going to pick this apart, it's going to be worse than Obamacare. There's not going to be any, there's not going to be any enforcement, there's not going to be any understanding of what we, what we advance, and when it comes back and somebody asks for the first S U P, we're going to be sitting here going, "How'd this happen?"
Okay, Commissioners, we need to do something here now, so somebody needs to...
I guess I'd recommend, just like you said, either, either you're going to vote yes on this and, and with this particular language in it, and then just make a suggestion, say, you know, tell the council, "We'd like you to look at this, this, and this." I mean, it's not really going to be a condition of the motion, but it's just, you know, your desire for them to look a little further into the situation.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to take another stab at this, and we'll see where it goes. I, I realize that, you know, there might be corporate housing or this and that, but one of the experiences that we've had was, in our community, was somebody come in on a, what they thought was going to be a 30-day rental, which ended up being a 60-day rental, and while her house was being built, it was her and her daughter, it served the purpose. And so I'm not against short-term rentals in situations such as that. But if, if it is a 12-bedroom house, it's more than likely going to be a party house, and that's what we, what we don't want. So my motion on item number 59, abeyance TXT 51291, would be follow staff's recommendation, recommendation for approval, and recommend that on short-term rentals, that they're limited to less than, less than four people, or less than five.
Less than five occupants.
Less than, less than five occupants, and the city council can flush out whatever, whatever they think. But I, I feel that that would get rid of the large number of people in, in these party houses. That is my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's vote.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So, so if we vote on this, this is a, is this a recommendation, or is this a, a motion? We're going to, we're going to proffer up a motion with a recommendation? Is that what I'm hearing?
The planning commission makes recommendations to the city council on amendments to Title 19.
So you're basically saying yes to what the planning staff has written, but with the change that only five people can be within that party house? And I'm assuming that's either day or night, for short-term rental.
Short-term rental, you meant?
Yeah, short-term rental. Regards to the bedroom, regards to the bedroom number, regardless of the size, five people in any house, at any time.
So I guess what's happened, no matter which way we vote, we, we are actually penalizing the folks that are doing the right thing, so it's just no way around that. But, but I hope that, I hope the intent of this is that it gets more and more refined with our recommendation up to the city council, and at some point, there'll be, there'll be an ordinance that doesn't really hurt the people that are doing it right.
Except all of them are going to have to get an S U P under this.
Well, yeah, and I think the guy they mentioned will probably be down in the morning with a, with a, with a P F flyer wagon full of money saying, "I need 1,500 S U Ps for my 1,500 houses, and, and the party starts Friday night."
We have a vote on the, we got a vote on the floor now, so let's see what the vote is. The motion fails, I'll entertain another motion.
Motion is for denial with a recommendation to go forward to the city council with a record of our concerns that have been discussed tonight, that we need to narrow the, the ordinance as drafted.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote.
May I just ask a question for clarification? In the motion of denial, is your motion to deny short-term residential rentals in residential districts, so no rentals less than 30 days in residential districts?
She's denying the motion as, sorry, the ordinance as written?
That's correct. The motion is to deny the ordinance as written with the, to telegraph our concerns up to the city council.
Okay.
That's correct.
And please note when you vote, a yes vote is for denial.
And that recommendation for denial will go forward to the city council in ordinance format.
Item 60 is DIR 51984, the applicant owner's city in Las Vegas, election of the 2014 planning commission officers. Staff has no recommendation. Commissioner Quinn, I believe you wanted to go first.
I just think it's been a great year, and I think Commissioner Flankis and Commissioner Trudy, Commissioner Moody, you've both done an outstanding job. But I'd like to start with the vice chairman nomination, if I could, and I'd like to nominate Trinity Schlotman, who's coming up to bat, as the vice chairman of next year's planning commission.
Are there any other nominations?
And I, I guess I wasn't sure we started with the, the vice chair, the, the voter on the chair, but irrelevant.
I think that's probably the...
I just want to start with the vice chair, if that's all right. Is there an order? Oh, I'm sorry, so my nomination is for Trinity to be the vice chairman next year.
Okay, then, I mean, I'm just, I think Trinity's a great guy, but I think we've had such a great year and things have gone well, that I was going to make a motion to keep the chairman the same, and Todd Moody to stay as vice chair.
So what, what do we...
Any additional nominations? Then you'll, if there are none, you'll close the nominations, and then you'll have a chance to vote on Commissioner Moody or Commissioner Slottman.
Okay, I would support that.
Oh, I'm sorry, then we're, Mr. Moody will stay as chair?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll vote on that.
Okay, then I'll change my motion. My motion will be for Vice Chairman Moody to stay as Vice Chairman Moody, and we'll leave it as is.
Okay, any more nominations for vice chair? Saying none, the nominations are closed, vote for vice chair. Commissioner Moody.
And can I ask the Director or city attorney whether I can vote, or should I abstain?
You don't have to ask me that. I guess you could vote for yourself, it'll be good, it's fine. It's fine. It's okay, you're fine.
Well, I'm just looking at the back, hoping my picture will end up. Wait a minute, those are the presidents, never mind.
It was the wrong list.
Please post. The motion for Commissioner Moody as vice chair passes. Now open up nominations for chair.
Thank you. Did you want to do it?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm not gonna make a bunch of speeches or anything, but I'm gonna try to repeat some of the history that may be as good as Obamacare is gonna get. And that's gonna be to have, and that's gonna have, that's gonna be...
Same president?
Well, Obama did it four years, and is getting ready, and did it another four, so I'm gonna nominate...
He wasn't as lucky the second four.
Well, he's there, but I'm gonna nominate Commissioner Flengus to continue as chairman, so we can see if we can get back-to-back on that.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Saying none, nominations are closed, please vote.
Is that a dig at me?
Peter, when we're done.
Okay, for the record, I'm, Chairman Flengus is elected again as chairman. And that will go on to the final item tonight, citizens' participation. Citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker allowed, may be limited. With all due respect tonight, we're gonna limit comments to three minutes.
Harold Barling, 6164 Pine Villa Avenue. I come to speak about items 32, 33, 34. For the third straight month, I have been notified there would be a hearing on these items. For the third straight month, they are on the agenda. For the third straight month, they've been in a ban, and not one word of explanation to the public as to why this is happening. You have been completely inconsiderate for people that are interested in this issue. And I would like to hear why. It's an issue for a tack and feed store on Michael and Rachel.
Yeah, so I do, I do know this, that if they do come forward with an advance at the next meeting, they have to show cause pursuant to the rules. So tonight, they get an advance, but the next time they come up, they will be required to show cause on why they're seeking an advance. So most likely, when they come up next time, it probably will be heard. And I apologize for the inconvenience to you on this, but some of these things are a little bit out of our control.
And I understand that this is scheduled for February?
To the February 11th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Karen Summer, 2324 Sunrise Meadows Drive, Las Vegas, 89134. Not to belige of the, the issue, but I believe that what you've just done by denying the short-term rental thing is actually keeping it the way that it is, which is allowing short-term rentals with a conditional use. Because there wasn't a proposal to ban it, the public hasn't had the opportunity to come out and speak in favor or against banning it. The issue was conditional use for small homes, special use for large homes. So by denying that, that means that the existing ordinance that allows conditional use for all short-term rentals is still in existence. I can't stress enough that short-term, we should not be confusing the word "short-term rental" with "party houses." Party houses can be held at any property, whether it's a long-term lease, or whether it's by an owner. We heard Annette say that there are parties that are formed where people will buy a house for the purpose of having parties every weekend, and if we don't do something about party houses, they're going to continue. The county bans party houses, I'm sorry, they ban short-term rentals right now, but they have a problem with party houses. So just having a ban on short-term rentals is not gonna take away the matter. It needs a lot more thought, and I'm really disappointed tonight, but yet, on the same point, it's gonna stay the way it is, which is...
Actually, ma'am, this is going on to City Council, so this isn't the final disposition of that particular ordinance. So this goes on to City Council, that's go to recommending, and then it goes to City Council. So you have two more opportunities to actually make a statement with regard to banning a party house.
And we will, we're, we're meeting both with the police...
So this is, this is just the first step, so.
Yeah. Okay, I just think there's a lot of confusion, and if anybody wants more explanation, we'll be happy to provide it to you, because it's just not coming out right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Flit, 612 Campbell Drive. They say a picture's worth a thousand words. I just want to show you two and a half years, two complete albums, a whole folder, lined paper notes what happens, that house. Just before we went to California, five weeks ago, they had a big party, which is the one one I called, Pita Ananello, as well as 311, for the police to come. Sunday morning, I went to Our Lady of Las Vegas. This was in my yard, as well as paper, potato chips, et cetera. They were strung Camel Drive, Alta, to Pinto, Palomino, up and down Palomino. They had pints, they had quarts, hard liquor, more cans of this, all these popular solo cups, country western song, and they were enjoyed. So please remember this as we proceed. Enforcement is the word, and I don't know how you're gonna go about it, but I have faith, trust but verify, you will come up with something.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can you throw that away for me, so I won't get caught? Thank you, sir.
I can tell by the can, it ain't, it ain't my award.
Sir, your name and address, please.
Do you drink a different beer? Is that right? Anthony Summer, 2324 Sunrise Meadows Drive. Again, I'd like to talk about this issue, about party houses, and in a nutshell, this is a case of a few bad apples, making it a horrific situation for literally more than 1,000 decent, honest residential property owners who rent their homes to single families. And perhaps the answer is, and the reaction when you hear Pat speaking about her experiences is the typical reaction of Commissioner Truesdale, which is to absolutely, and anyone else would answer the question, would you want to live next to these party homes? The answer is never. But the, the solution, it then becomes not so simple, because when this was first heard by the city, their reaction was the same as Commissioner Truesdale. They wanted to just ban all short-term rentals. But as my wife said, short-term rentals, less than 30 days, are not the same as party houses. I will guarantee you that of the 14 properties that we own in the city, which really are only two- and three-bedroom homes, not a single family that we've brought into this town has ever complained, you've never heard a neighbor of that, of our homes ever complain to the city. And that, that truth applies to over 1,000 homes in the city. And Las Vegas is a city that wants to bring business. All these families come to our residential neighborhoods and don't even know they exist, and say, wow, Las Vegas is more than just a strip. And it brings business, and they go shopping, and it brings money to our town. That's what Vegas is all about. So to ban all of these 1,000 homes and say, you can't have that, provide that service, where people don't want to live in hotels, they want to experience the residential neighborhoods of Las Vegas, you're actually cutting out a huge part of the business of the city. And that's not the answer. But the party house, and I totally agree in eliminating, that we need to eliminate party houses, the answer is enforcement, and that's kept coming up tonight. And enforcement means empowering Metro to have, and, and also researching what works. And what has worked in the city of Newport Beach was a, a police ordinance that allowed the police to come out and shut them down the same night that they got their first complaint, and put a notice on the house, they had to stay there by, for 90 days, no one's allowed to take it down. And when, when the owners heard about this, they said, we're going to another city. Bad luck for that city, okay? But that worked, and if we bring that type of ordinance here, it can work in Las Vegas, and also, as Commissioner Goins said, not hurt the people that are doing the right thing, and are genuinely landlords running, allowing their homes to be used for single-family residences. And perhaps the wording "single-family residence" in the ordinance might be an answer, because none of the people at a party house are related to one another. They're all from little pockets from 20 different families around the country.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Does anybody else wish to be heard?
Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. You know, if you guys would take a cut in your paying benefits, they could pay the heating bill in here, because it's colder than a banker's heart out here. On the last City Council meeting, item number 26, they approved a planning guide for the tree schedule and that. The day after the, the, the meeting, I received the last issue of the High Country News, where three scientists that have been examining the tree growths and that have come to the conclusion that we're in for a catastrophic change. We're gonna have shrubbed stuff. Anyway, I had, I turned the article over to Director Finn, and he said that he would send you a copy of that, but if you're gonna plan for the next 30, 40 years, which, and what you should be doing, you need to read this article, because that, the trees that we are planting right now are gonna be dead. And it deals with the reaction between the soil and the atmosphere, and it explains it in the article, in layman's terms. But you really should read that, because the planning guide that we have, and believe me, I know, I've got, drive by my house and look at that disaster out front, that's $117,000 in 28 years, and it's disaster. Nothing grows down there, and it's gonna get a lot worse. So if, if you would, I ask you to read that article. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to be heard this evening?
Mr. Chairman, one thing before we leave, I'd like to, Ms. Farlow always tells us about meetings, but I'd like to share a meeting with you on February 14th, is the Digital Sign Expo, which is gonna be at the Las Vegas Sands. I think it would be appropriate for maybe some of our city staff, and any of the Commissioners that would like to go, let me know, we'll see if we can find some tickets, and, because what we have presented to us today is only the tip of the iceberg of what the sign companies would like to shove down every major city's throat.
Thank you, Commissioner. Saying no one, anybody else want to comment?
I just want everybody to move closer, because we're gonna take a nice picture for the end of the year. Thank you.
And a question for the director, if all of us are going, does this have to be noticed?
Yes.
If we attend together as a group, yes. If we go individually, no.
Okay, this meeting for the final meeting of 2013 is adjourned.